Members of the council, honored guests, ladies and gentlemen of the community. Let us pray. Lord, we pause in your holy presence, asking your blessing on this assembly and those representing the city of Santa Ana, the leaders of the community, and those who will be honored with exceptional service certificates for their contribution to the community. We are grateful for their service and thank you for their inspiration, their faithful performance, and unselfish willingness to serve both the city and the citizens of the community. We pray for them, your continued blessing of divine guidance and providential leadership in future endeavors on behalf of the city and for the benefit of the community and all Santa Ana citizens. We would ask you to bless the mayor and the council members as they conduct the business listed on the agenda, guide their thinking and actions that they will be positive, productive, and successful. May this council meeting, which was called to order in unity, be conducted expeditiously with dignity and adjourned in harmony. We pray in the spirit of the Serenity Prayer, saying, "God, grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and the wisdom to know the difference." We ask in your holy name, eternal God, and all I God's people said, amen.
You may be seated. Mayor Protem Michelle Martinez will not be attending today's meeting. She was with us earlier in closed session, but she's now signed off. I think she's back at the County School of Government in Harvard, taking a special course. So with that, Madam City Attorney, is there anything to report out of co-session?
Mayor, the only reportable action item we have is the matter of a workers' comp case is listed on the agenda. The city council approved by a vote of six to zero with Councilmember Solario absent to approve settlement of $1.5 million.
Okay. So let me hope to get other council members present. I believe we have a presentation by Councilmember Solario. Go ahead, Councilwoman Solario, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to bring up everybody involved with the People's History of OC Summer Enrichment Program. Come on up. Don't be shy. And then we have a couple of lead organizers and some students that were a part of this. Let's give them all a round of applause. They're coming up. San Ana Unified Students, an outstanding public teacher, and the executive director of the Heritage Museum of Orange County. I'm honored to bring this group up for many reasons, mainly the work that these students did and the research they did. I had the executive director of the Heritage Museum, Kevin Cabrera, who said, "Hey, we did this awesome program over the summer at the museum. You need to know about it. You need to recognize them." And I also had personnel from the school district say, "Hey, we have this fantastic program that," by the way, your wife is involved with, Lynn Lee, and I said, "Well, you know, she and other teachers got recognized recently, but this program just happened over the summer." And as you know, the big believer I am in education, I thought I would invite these students to join us because this is the first year we do this. Some information, the People's History of OC Summer Enrichment Program was developed just this year to introduce students to the contributions, legacy, and the struggles of the county's ethnic communities here in Santa Ana and in other cities. Through interactive programming, including project-based learning, field trips, guest speakers, and panel exhibits, students are introduced to our rich cultural diversity. The goal of the program was also to have students learn, understand, and more importantly, connect with the history that surrounds them in their everyday lives. The program also believes that if students are able to connect with their community history, it activates a sense of cultural pride, civic engagement, and awareness of the social progress that happens through community engagement. Also, this kind of ethnic studies program, by the way, is a model for what the state of California is trying to do, which is to make ethnic studies a high school requirement and have many programs like this statewide. So in many ways, this is a model for other communities to mirror. Today, I'm very pleased to recognize the two outstanding leaders that made this happen and for enlightening our youth and for having them learn about their history today, the history in the past, and how we are all connected. I will let them speak a little bit about the program, at least one of them, and if they could maybe mention two or three of the historical sites they mentioned and the significance, that would be awesome. So again, we're giving recognition to Kevin Cabrera, the executive director of the Heritage Museum of Orange County, and Lynn Lee, San Ana High School History and Ethnic Studies teacher. So if you can come on up to speak, or maybe both of you could come up. We're a student, but Kevin, please.
Thank you so much, Councilman Solario. We want to display something. The final capstone of the project was to develop an art piece. All the students did some art pieces. This is one of the art pieces, and it represents all the different cultural communities of our county, just so you can see how we are all connected and how each one of our stories is important to the legacy of this county. I want to say some of the things that we got the chance to do on our program as we visited Little Texas. Has anyone ever heard of Little Texas? Little Texas was the African-American community of Orange County that was here in Santa Ana. It was the highest population of blacks in the county, and it was here in Orange County. And there was a lot of rich history within that community, which, you know, a lot of our students didn't know, but we exposed them to that. We did some walking tours. We met some of the people that were involved in the community. Another place we went is we went to Little Saigon. We got a chance to tour Westminster, the Asian Garden Mall, and they learned a lot about that community. So understanding and really having that personal connection and walking in the same places where everyone had a chance to live and walk was very important. So we're glad that the students took place in this. I feel that they've learned so much. I'd really like to have one of them talk. Cielo, do you want to say something?
Yes. (APPLAUSE). I really enjoyed being a part of the People's History of Orange County program because I think that it's so important to remember, well, not only to remember, but to acknowledge what minorities do and their role in our society. And I think that a lot of people forget how, well, that minorities really make our society function. And we were able to learn so much about so many different things. We talked about how successful minorities have been and how that hasn't always been represented before. One of the things we brought up at some point was that at some point, there was a Black Wall Street, which was burned down. There was a Chinatown in Santa Ana that got burned down as well. And it's clear that these things are burned down because of hate, but I think that it's really important to move forward, knowing that if you educate yourself, then equality is possible.
Lynn, a few words?
This all started because I was at a fair, at a table, recruiting people for a different academy, and Kevin comes up to me and says, "Hey, I got a great idea." And I'm like, "What, Kevin?" And he says, "We could do this great history program about the communities in the city." And he's a historian. He's a fantastic historian with a focus on the black community. And he was telling me all the knowledge he knew, and I'm fascinated with it because I'm a history teacher, but, you know, historians like to talk, right? So I was the teacher, and I was able to turn all of that into lessons and make it exciting for the kids because you can't just sit up there and talk, right? And the kids would like just listen the whole time. So we also got to eat the food of the community, which was really exciting. So when we went to the Little Texas, we had barbecue. When we went to Little Saigon, we had pho and spring rolls. And when we went to, I'm blanking out. You guys will help. When we went to the Logan Barrow, we had Mexican food, of course, but it was really exciting. So I encourage all of you to enroll all of your students in next year because it's going to happen again next year, okay? All right.
So on behalf of the mayor and city council, it's my honor to recognize this great program by two fantastic organizers and some amazing students. Kevin, by the way, also, he knows so much and is so energetic about our community because he used to work for the city of Santa Ana in our library and in the history room in particular. So we give him another round of applause for that, and let's give them all a round of applause.
As you guys are taking your picture, you should be very proud of Ms. Lynn Lee. She's one of the best instructors in the San Ana Unified School District, highly respected. Cielo Chigoyan, who you heard speak, is also one of the top 24 speakers in the nation. So she should be recognized. She's humble. She's not going to tell you that. She's that good.
And they're special, the only public presentation tonight. So round of applause. Thank you all.
Thank you, Lynn, and thank you, Councilwoman Solario, and keep up the great work. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're now going to go to consent calendar. Are there any items that council members wish to pull? If not, I will entertain a motion.
We have, I have one speaker on.
Go ahead. Who is it? Alicia Rojas, if you could please come forward.
Hello, everybody. Mayor Bolillo, it's been a long time. It's nice to see everybody. Wanted to say two thanks quickly. One, thank you so much for funding the arts one more time. I know the city's going through strain, and I'm really happy to see that the arts are being funded one more time in the Arts Grant. One of my questions is, Media Arts Santa Ana was awarded a grant. I'll wait to get the mayor's attention. So Media Arts Santa Ana won the grant, but the people who founded the organization is Sandra Pochas Armento and Victor Poyan. Sandra is currently the chair of the Arts Commission. I find that to be a conflict of interest. And number two, I sent you guys a little package. As you know, the Santa Ana Community Artists Coalition got started about five years ago because of a public mural city wall infighting that happened. Our mural was canceled by you guys citing an RFP process, a public request for proposal, an open call for artists. We had a contract with the city manager. We were volunteers. We had the will. You guys didn't let us do it. Five years later, that wall is still empty. Five years later, we've completed 10 more murals. We're very proud of them. I just saw a mural come up, another city wall. And number two, it's the mural in Angel Park. It's a city wall. They got awarded with our RFP process. What happened to five years ago? So in my documents, I named them one, two, and three. You can go back if you like and take the time to read. I think it's unfair. I think the person who is driving the Arts Council has been divisive, and now she's running for city council, and hope this doesn't happen. But she was responsible for pushing you guys to cancel our mural because it didn't have an RFP process, and now you have another city wall, have another mural without an RFP process or an open call. Five years later, Arts Commission, it doesn't matter. I just wanted to point these things out to you. I'm not trying here to contest against artists or get their gigs canceled or their murals canceled. I'm in support for any artist that gets a gig.
All right, your time is up. Thank you.
But I think there needs to be an open process, and this was fairly unfair. Thank you so much for your time.
So with that, let me bring it back to council members. Any items people, members want to pull? If not, I would entertain a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item 55A, I would entertain a motion. And I would consider we pick one of the two. I think 200 words has always been a standard here in the city. It's up to the council members, but there can be either 200 words or 400 words on candidate statements. Or maybe we just give candidates the option, but it's kind of goofy.
Whatever we've done before, what's been the...
200.
So we should stick...
200. I think we should be consistent, but I would entertain a motion.
I'll move it with the 200.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Solario. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item 55B.
Motion approved.
We have a motion approved. Is there a second?
I'm going to second with comment.
Second. Go ahead and comment.
So here's where we're looking at something that came before us a number of months ago with regard to allowing the voters in the city an opportunity to select their representative by way of district elections. And it's unfortunate that a couple months later, we're finally having to deal, or we're addressing this now. A couple months after, we had already addressed it before. Fortunately, members of the community are not going to be able to see the impact, the positive impact of district elections by way of them allowing, them being able to choose their own candidate this election. It looks like we're potentially looking at having district elections take effect two years out. So it's a delayed benefit to the residents of our city. But in any case, again, I am seconding. I am supportive, but I do think that it's a, we've done a community to a certain degree a disservice by delaying this. But just wanted to make sure to make that comment. I know we're still dealing with how to address this because there is litigation around this. But in any case, hopefully we can get this litigation piece resolved soon.
I will be supportive as well, but Councilmember Vince Armento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know that I've had conversations with the city attorney about the pending litigation and to the extent we can be, we can voice our thoughts on this. Obviously, there was an attempt made early to try to put this before the voters during the June primary, and that was thwarted by some very questionable actions that were taken by one of our members of the council here. So now we're having to acquiesce and delay what is clearly our election system being in violation of the California Voting Rights Act. So to the extent that we get this resolved, it's going to be delayed an additional two years, which does harm the community because we are practicing and we are electing another cycle of candidates under a flawed system, under an illegal system. To the extent we can get it resolved as quickly as possible, that's another reason why I am going to be supporting this as well, supporting it sort of by holding my nose because this should have been done early. It should have been done cleaner. We would have been able to give the voters the opportunity to make a decision during the primary in June, and we would have been able to install our new election system. So whether or not the voters wanted it, they would have had an opportunity to opine during the primary. But to the extent that we get this resolved quickly and as effectively as possible, I'll be supportive of the motion as well.
Thank you. Any additional comment, Councilwoman Solario?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think this has been a fluid process with a lot of twists and turns and changes, and we have some actions today, but, you know, there'll continue to be more twists and turns and changes likely. I think in communities that have to deal with these litigation items regarding the California Voting Rights Act, usually they're not simple. Usually they are costly, so this is not unusual, even though, you know, the twists and turns in every city are different. The important thing is getting it right once we do define some new lines and once we do find out the best way to be in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act. So I'm still committed to, you know, a process that, you know, does right by the California Voting Rights Act and does right by the Asian-American community that we have in Santa Ana, particularly on the west side, and we'll continue to work on this until we get it right. Thank you.
All right. With that, Councilmember Juan Villagas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, I don't think it's a flawed system. If it's a flawed system or illegal system, then every one of our seats here is illegally, it's illegal. So, you know, I don't believe in that. It's just a different system. That's my comment.
All right. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, if five members, if more than four members of the council will be submitting an argument or authoring an argument, I'd like to ask that those names be identified so that we don't have any brownies violations.
All right, are council members interested in submitting arguments? Why don't they just speak individually?
Submitting arguments in favor?
In favor or in opposition, either.
When is the deadline for that?
The deadline would be July 31st.
Let them just come to you individually in the first four.
And we don't need to decide that right now, do we?
Right.
We know it has to be five, or do we have to identify the five now?
It's best and more transparent if the more than four members...
But if we don't know, you don't want to mislead.
Can we nominate somebody?
But I think we would encourage folks that vote for it to consider doing a statement or signing onto a supportive statement. So can you read who you have as yes votes?
It's unanimous.
It's a unanimous vote, six numbers. Yes.
So just those that are so inclined, please contact the clerk.
Sounds good.
Because some may not want to.
And so you don't have to. It's just that if more than three of you, if more than three, you would then have to call a meeting just to have a conversation over what you want the ballot language, your argument, to look like. So if it's three or fewer, no problem. You can get together and write it. But if there are four or more of you that want to, that's when you would need to...
Let's just say the first three.
Can we just say all of us, and then a couple of us choose not to if we choose to...
I'll choose not to.
Okay, so the balance...
So now it's up to one more.
Fair enough.
All right. Thank you. So with that, 55C. Connie Hamilton, followed by Peter Katz, followed by Cecilia Iglesias.
Hello, members of council. City Attorney...
Ms. Wash, please.
Oh, Maria Norma.
Your honor.
Hello, everyone. First, I wanted to say thank you to the city council for being supportive of Connect to Council. We did all of the ward events last year and this year, got through them all, and every one of the council representatives participated, and I appreciate that. Yeah, I'm here to speak about the tax, the sales tax that you want to inflict upon the residents, and I have some thoughts. First of all, it just seems like everybody is wanting to tap the residents for more money. I stood in front of San Ana Unified Board last night. They're trying to do a bond, $232 million bond, which will end up costing $425 million, and it's going to all be on the residents. And I don't understand that because the enrollment is down at San Ana Unified, but yet they want more money, so that doesn't make a lot of sense. Anyway, but everyone's hitting us up for more money. Water rates are going up, electricity's going up. We're just being bombarded by increases. I'm sure state taxes are going to go up. We want to repeal the gas tax. I'm advising everyone to vote no on all bonds and all tax increases. There's got to be a way Santa Ana can go another round here with this, maybe increase the TOT. I don't know about the jail reuse study, but I don't know how that came out, but there's got to be some money there. There's some Airbnbs we could probably get tax money from. We could probably rent out office spaces, city hall. There's a lot of different ways that you guys could make money, not just hit the residents with all this money that you want. So anyway, those are my thoughts, and I will be voting no if you do put that on the ballot, and I will encourage everyone to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter.
Followed by Ceci Iglesias, followed by David Villagrande.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Peter Katz. I'm president of the Common Link Board that oversees all 64 neighborhoods in the city of Santa Ana. The city of all cities in the county can least afford a sales tax increase. Our people are struggling. This is a very poor city, and I am in opposition to the sales tax increase. We've had a number of years since we sold off our fire department to fix this problem. We continue to go down the same old road, pass it on to the consumer and to the property owner, and I think they're seeing a backlash in the state. And I looked at your survey that you have here of all the cities that have raised 1% or more in sales tax increases. Out of 24 cities that have asked for a 1% sales tax increase in the last five years in the state of California, only one city is a large city, and that was Riverside, and it barely got its sales tax increase. The other ones are very, very small cities that are struggling. Some of these cities are close to the 10 and 1/4 max that the state allows. You have cities that are now selling off to the police departments, to the sheriff's department. So where does it stop? I mean, now that Irvine is pulling out of the OC Fire Authority agreement, that's going to go up with the city of Santa Ana as well. Our water bills are going up, electric bills are going up, property taxes are going up. Where do we draw the line in this city? And you wonder why we got so many homeless people on the street that can't afford rent, they can't afford to own. So I'm going to campaign among all the neighborhoods to oppose this sales tax increase. Thank you.
Next speaker, Cecilia Iglesias, followed by David Villagrande.
Good evening, council members. My name is Cecilia Iglesias, and I am a board member for the San Ana Unified School District, also resident of Windsor Village Neighborhood Association and the founder of the parent union for Orange County. I'm here to speak on behalf of the sales tax increase, asking that you guys don't put the sales tax on the ballot. Santa Ana residents have been burdened a lot with tax increase in the past 10 years and more recently here in Santa Ana with the San Ana Unified School District Board of Education voting to put a $232 million bond on the ballot for November, costing the residents of within the San Ana Unified School District $425 million. And that's not even saying if the bond is sold at a different interest rate, it's most likely is going to cost us more. So what you are going to be doing is contributing the reason why families are leaving from Santa Ana. They can't afford to stay here in Santa Ana. And then so in a way, you are also going to be contributing to our declining enrollment in San Ana Unified School District. As you know, here in Santa Ana, we have about 62 neighborhood associations. I'm a very hard worker. I will canvass every day, mark my words, every day to oppose this tax increase. It is not right and it's not fair. We have to stand together with the residents of Santa Ana. As you know, Senate District 29, they recalled the senator for voting for the gas tax increase. We will do the same here in Santa Ana, and I'll take it as my personal responsibility to go door to door for the next four months to inform the voters, along with the individuals that spoke before me, so we can talk to all the voters in Santa Ana and tell them to vote no on this tax and definitely on San Ana Unified School District tax increase too. So I'm hoping that you will vote with the individual constituents that elected you, and you vote no on this, don't put anything on the ballot, and we will be working together. If not, then we'll see you on the campaign trail. We'll be voting no on the tax increase. Thank you.
Next speaker, David Villagrande, followed by Magda Gomez.
Good evening, council members. My name is David. I'm a resident of Sarana. I'm asking tonight, oppose another tax increase to our community. We already pay high taxes, and what you guys doing, you guys driving our families out of the city because family cannot afford... of the city because family cannot afford the rent. Thank you.
Next speaker, Magda Gomez, followed by Mike Tardif.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Magda Gomez, and I'm a Santa Ana resident. I'm here to ask you to reconsider the sales tax. You know what? It may seem that like adding one penny is not a big deal, but it is, and you guys know that. Most of us Santa Ana residents, we're already having a hard time paying taxes. It is already hard for a lot of our families to buy even basic needs. I'm not sure about how many families, how many Santa Ana families you guys are able to talk to every day, but I do talk to some of them every day. I'm the new program coordinator for the parent union, and I'm out there doing outreach and talking to families, and it is sad to hear their stories. It is sad to hear that they share with me that this time of the year, it's hard for them because they have to buy school supplies, they have to buy uniforms. Their kids are excited to go back to school, and the parents are worried because they have to buy all what their children need to go back to school. Please don't add this new sales tax. Thank you.
Mike Tardif, please.
Good evening, city council. I'm going to read a short paragraph from a communication that you received from one of the city car dealers, new car dealers. He says, "A tax increase on the citizens of this city that can least afford it is wrong." I'll add that, you know, that a sales tax is one of the most regressive taxes, and it taxes the poor the most, the ones who can least afford it. You're very well aware of that. Businesses will suffer in Santa Ana. Why would anyone go to, say, a Home Depot in Santa Ana when there is another one close by, like in Tustin, and buy the same product cheaper? This person is a car dealer, in buying a car, the sales tax is charged where the individual lives, but most people don't know that. 33% of his new car customers live in Santa Ana, so 2/3 of the car customers live outside Santa Ana. Why would they come here to buy a vehicle, a new vehicle, when they think they will pay less at another dealer in another city? I do not support an increase in the sales tax, and I hope you vote no. I am a business owner in Santa Ana as well, and this will affect me in the same way. My prices will be higher to my customers, and that will affect my business negatively. Thank you.
Because Peter took too long to get to the microphone, we're going to go to the next speaker.
Mayor Culpa. Mayor Culpa. Thank you, Mayor. Peter Whittingham, representing the Orange County Auto Dealers Association. I was here two weeks ago, and so I won't waste your time with re-agitating what I shared at that evening, but appreciated the amendment at that time to create a buy local program as an incentive rebate program for sales of vehicles from the 10 franchised auto dealers here in Santa Ana, and would encourage your council to reaffirm that commitment with whatever action you do take tonight, if in fact there is a measure that gets moved forward to the ballot in November. Thanks so much for your time and support.
Thank you. I believe, unless I missed anybody, that that was the last speaker. Is anybody else switched addresses on this item? Seeing no one, then let me say we're beyond public comment, and bring it back to council for thoughts and deliberation. Councilmember Benavides?
Sure, go ahead. Okay. We had some discussion around this last, the last meeting, and it's been something that we've been discussing indirectly for a few months, as we've been reviewing the budget, preparing the budget for the next fiscal year. The next fiscal year's budget is, we're looking at a deficit, well, this current year's fiscal budget now, we're looking at a deficit of $10 million or so, $10 million plus dollars. That continues, projections increase significantly over the next few years, as our revenue is not keeping up with expenses. So, we've been wrestling with what to do, how to go about addressing this. I think myself and my colleagues recognize that it's a, we need to come up with some type of direct response, a solution. One of those is in line with some of the comments that members of the public have made, in that we need to look at other opportunities for economic development, for increasing our revenue, our sales base within the city, seeing development, encouraging development, thinking outside the box to be able to bring in some of that sustainable, ongoing revenue. At the same time, short of not taking this, by not taking an action, by placing something on the ballot, and not giving the residents that opportunity to address and potentially vote to be able to bring in revenue by way of a sales tax increase, then we would likely be seeing ourselves in a position of potential bankruptcy in a few years out. At least, that's what the projections have been provided to us by the city manager and staff. Is that correct, city manager?
That is correct. Councilmember Benavides.
So, in essence, we're not, we either need to take action, and tonight's the opportunity that we have to take action, or we keep pushing this out and then potentially see a significant decrease in city services. There are a number of options that are presented before us tonight. One of the, I don't think any of them have a direct overall sunset, and that's one of the things that I do think is necessary. What has presented, if we are going to place this before the voters, before the ballot, what has been presented to us is that currently, one of the significant issues is the fact that our liability, the PERS liability, has increased significantly, and it's put us in this situation. However, those projections are going to, after a period of time, I believe it's about two decades, will be, will turn around and come back down and provide some relief there. So, ultimately, I don't think that it should be something that we would, should put on the voters in perpetuity, long-term. There have been two options that have been presented, both a 1% and a 1 1/2%. There is more that we would potentially be able to do and provide as far as increase and improved services and improvements in other capital projects, potentially at the rate of 1.5, because it would lend a $60 million projected revenue increase. So, what I would feel comfortable supporting, and I think what we as a council should consider, is potentially going out with a 1.5 after 10 years, decreasing back down to the 1, and then sunsetting altogether in 10 years, similar to what OCT has done with their measurement 20 years out, and then let the voters decide at that point. So, present that to my colleagues for consideration, and see what other feedback my colleagues have to provide.
Councilmember Villagrande?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, people need to understand, just like Councilmember Benavides was saying, that we're not receiving enough revenue for the city to sustain the services that we need to provide as a city. This city has 189 vacancies right now, it's 189 people that could be providing services to you. If you're wondering why you need a business license, this takes so long, or you need an inspection, or code enforcement, or clerks, or things filed, it's just, the list goes on and on. There's a lot of streets that need to be repaired. I didn't know this until I got here, but when you're going to repair a street, there's a schedule, and, boys, to get, it could take years before they get to your street. It's just incredible. I realize, you know, how the listing works, and you can't really make significant changes until you have the funds for it. A tax increase would help us be able to make a significant impact on this, not just, you know, providing more services, but to make those repairs to our parks, or streets, so on and so forth, repairs and replacements of things that ultimately get used and worn out, that need to be fixed. But why a tax increase? People ask, you know, it's not just the PERS, I know every city's facing the PERS, but like I said, when you, I call it the fixed income, Santa Ana's like on a fixed income because you can only receive so much due to Prop 13, there's a lot of, a large percentage of homes that are under that, and I respect that, and it's a good thing, but ultimately, you know, the economy is going up, and, you know, the services cost more, labor costs more, but we're still receiving only so much revenue, and so we can't keep up with it. So, we have to do something, and it's our responsibility to put it out there to the voters, to inform you, for you folks to make the decision. It's not us to make a decision, our job is to bring it to you and the folks, the residents of Santa Ana, they make the decision. It's not us, we can't. We can support something, but that's about it. We're like everyone else, we're a resident too, and we get to have a vote. And so, Santa Ana spends a lot of money. You can't compare us to other cities, and the reason we spend a lot of money is because this city's very dense, there's a lot of people that live here. So, what does that mean? That means that we have to hire more people, there's more services to provide, we have to contract services also, and it's just, we have a lot of people here. So, it costs more. It's not like in Irvine where their property tax, they're receiving a lot more, or some other city. Here, you know that we're 27.2 square miles, and it's 343,000 residents that live here, half a million Monday through Friday because of work, so, of course, this place needs some fixing up, and we're not going to make a change unless, you know, we can all pass a tax measure. And so, it's not a popular thing to do, it's very difficult to come up here and to ask, but our job is to put the information out there. And so, those are my comments, and I support the 1.5 with a sunset on it at, what, 10 years, we're looking at? Or we can discuss that more. That's my comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Additional comments? Councilmember, does Sarmiento want to speak as well, or just Tina? Go ahead, Sal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, thank you very much to all the speakers who came out to speak today. It is absolutely well within your right to canvass neighborhoods and campaign against anything that you wish that you don't agree with. That's the beauty about democracy, and that's what we're doing here on this council, is we're letting the public make a decision. So, I want to put some things into perspective. Number one, when it comes to car sales, I think we've heard, I'm going to make it very clear, when a person comes from another city to buy cars in Santa Ana, they pay the tax from their city. So, that's not going to deter people from buying cars in the city of Santa Ana. When a Santa Ana resident comes and buys a car in Santa Ana, they will pay the tax, however, they're going to get that tax back in a rebate check. So, you're going to receive a check in the mail that gives you that tax back. So, car sales, you don't have to worry, it's, you're getting that money right back. Groceries, anything you buy in a grocery store will not be taxed. So, groceries, food, feeding your family, that will not be taxed. Now, if you go to Del Taco and you get something prepared, then that will have the 1, 1 1/2 sales tax. So, I want to make that clear. Car dealerships are going to be able to run, just as they always run. We are going to create a shop local program where we're going to educate our public again that if you buy a car in Santa Ana, that, whatever that increase in tax was, you're getting that back in a check. For, we're going to let our residents know that you are not paying taxes on groceries. So, why do we, why is this council bringing this to your attention? Several things have occurred in the last 15 years. The way people shop today is very different from the way people shopped when I first was elected. Before, you would go to the mall or go to the store and pay your cash and pay your taxes. Today, with the online purchases, we don't receive that revenue, so we've taken a huge hit on that. Yes, our PERS has also gone up, that means the retirements have also gone up, and so we have to pay more into that. What we're trying to do here is provide services. At the end of the day, Santa Ana residents, the people of Santa Ana, we have always worked as a team. You not always agree, we don't always agree on everything, but when we do move forward on something, we work as a team. We didn't all agree on regulating medical cannabis here in the city of Santa Ana. We didn't all agree. It was a very tough vote, in fact, it was a 4-3 vote. Similar arguments were made during that time. At the end of the day, there were some people that took that leap of faith, and what happened? Number one, we shut down over 95% of the illegal dispensaries that were near schools, near parks, near residences. We segregated them to the industrial zone, and we brought in money to the city. So, what happens with that? We're able to provide services. Now, I heard someone say, you know what, we just need to stop wasteful spending. I want to share this with you. I was elected in 2006. When I came here, the second floor of City Hall was jam-packed with workers. It's a ghost town in there, there's not one desk. We have cut and cut and cut during the Great Recession, and we still haven't filled those positions. We have some issues, ladies and gentlemen, that have emerged. We have a homeless issue, we have a response time issue, because it's very difficult for us to compete and bring in more officers to help mitigate that. At the same time, we also have to provide after-school programs, we have to fix our parks, we have to fix our infrastructure. It's about service, it's about quality of life. We, as Santa Ana residents, are going to decide what type of quality of life we want and deserve, and that is what you're going to do in November. You're going to make that decision. Our job is to put it out there for you to make that decision. Based on the decision you make, we, as councilmembers, then have to address it and try to find creative ways to fix it if it doesn't go through. But in the meantime, it's not like we're sitting on our hands and saying, this is the only thing we're doing. I can't tell you how many different items, and you've heard them here during the budget report, where we talked about what we can do to generate revenue. We're checking all options. Our governor did something years ago, and I bring it, I said it at the last council meeting, I'll say it again. He was at the mayor's house, and the mayor invited us over, and, you know, he's in his retirement years, and I said to him, "Mr. Brown, why do you want to run? You should be retiring, laying out at the beach." And he said, "Because I think I can fix this." This was during the Great Recession, when the state of California was going bankrupt, and what he did was masterful. Instead of saying, "We're going to raise taxes," he says, "Residents, here's our needs, here's what it's going to cost, you make the decision if you want these services or not." And he was very transparent about that. That's what we're doing here today, is just being very transparent. I live here, I'm not going anywhere. My kids grew up here, they've played in those baseball parks, they've played at the football fields. I want my grandkids to have the same opportunities, if not better, than my kids did. I applaud Councilmember Benavides because he's saying, "Let's put a sunset on this." Why? Because some of our PERS obligation is going to drop, we're not going to need that 0.5. And then down the road, we're not going to, we're not going to need that 1%. So, what he's doing is looking ahead into the future and adjusting, readjusting us back to where we need to be. This is a temporary action, but it's up to the voters what you want to do. What kind of Santa Ana do we want to be? I think we could be a great Santa Ana. And we, as, we are asking folks, and we ourselves are going to vote to impose that 1 1/2 cent sales tax. We also have a responsibility as a council to assure that we spend it in the right places, that we take a look at what is the most important items that we have to fix in our city, and I think that we should do community meetings with that, Mr. City Manager. We should prioritize, because at the end of the day, this is not the city council, this is the city of, the residents of the city of Santa Ana, saying, "These are the things that are important to us, we need to get a hold of our homeless issue, we need to create programs for that, we need to have officers that can respond when issues arise, and we need to make sure that we have programs for our youth so that we can bolster what's happening at the Santa Ana Unified School District." So, I thank you for... So, I thank you for giving me the time, Mr. Mayor, but it is not easy, but it's important. So, I hope that we can pass this tonight and let the residents decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Vince Sarmiento, you have a comment?
Well, I think we have a comment over here. Councilor Audio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all know, I have voted no on similar measures these past few weeks, and we'll do so again tonight for a few important reasons, I believe. Number one, you know, many communities have sought, you know, revenue enhancements, and, you know, every community will do different amounts of outreach. I know the school district was mentioned, you know, they did some surveys, some surveys back also to the community saying what the, what the voters and the parents wanted, and that's the way they went about their, their process. Here, I think it's largely been a staff-driven process, and they didn't look at the entire range of tax and fee options. As we all know or should know, sales taxes are the most regressive, meaning that it impacts poor folk the most, whereas there are other options that other communities have done or, or could do, and we could consider that, that here. And I know we're now talking about, you know, doing outreach, and we should, irregardless of what happens over these next months, including with our business community. I know the auto dealers were here and brought up some, some ideas, but that program, for example, hasn't been, you know, finalized. A lot of this outreach work should have done, been done before. Also, I know, you know, we're looking at, you know, different articulations in the measure on how these things might read, and, you know, there's really a lot of ambiguity. I mean, it, it speaks to, you know, enhancing public safety, if you will, and addressing the homelessness issues, but I don't know how much is going to go to what. And I know, you know, we've talked about vacancies at this meeting and before. Many of the vacancies we have at City Hall are budgeted vacancies. You know, the current budget that we, that we approved and that we're working with has 48 vacant budgeted positions in the police department. We have to fill them. We particularly have to fill them before we, you know, ask for more dollars or if we're going to push this measure, saying this for public safety, then we need to have an honest conversation about how that money might be used or might not be used again too, because homelessness is a big issue. The measure says money is going to go towards homeless housing and services. Well, how much? Where? You know, by ourselves, with the county, you know, very unclear. Also, you know, we do have not just staffing needs, but we do have infrastructure needs. But, you know, infrastructure needs typically, you know, we fund with other capital dollars, not necessarily, you know, revenue like the sales tax. And so, this measure is very unclear of how much of any of this may go to capital expenditures for things like, you know, parks and streets, whether new or refurbishments, you know, all very unclear. And, you know, maybe there is time to clarify some of these things between now and, and November, but ideally, those things are spelled out before, they're communicated with the audience. We communicate and work with residents and businesses to, to have a package. You know, somebody on my Facebook said, you know, "Do it like, you know, Measure M at OCTA." And you know what? Before they put things on the measure, they do two to three years of outreach and work, you know, how much, what's it going to be used towards, what, what kind of oversight is there going to be, et cetera. And we didn't do that in this case. You know, that's not to say we're not service deficient, because we are, clearly. I think we all see that and believe that, you know, but how we, how we govern and do things, I think is very important. It sets the tone, not just for the here and now, but for the future. And so, you know, I'm hopeful that staff and, you know, my colleagues in the community have learned that, yeah, maybe we could muscle this through, and maybe it gets on the ballot, maybe it passes or doesn't, but it really is not the best way to involve our community or the council in decision-making. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I believe we have motion of second, but do we have additional thought or comment? Vince, if you do, I'll let you speak and then I'll make comment. All right. Thank you. Boy, to me, this is a tough one, because I see certain savings that I think we can implement, you know, such as about $8 million. If you look at the Marshals contract, that right now is part of the budget for the jail. If you go on a go-forward basis, staff is basically zeroing it out, and assuming $8 million becomes zero, therefore, we have an $8 million gap additional. One option might be, right now aggressively, seek another contract with the Marshals and assume that it's not going to run out, work very, very hard between now and 2018, and maybe recover that $8 million. And, and now, you know, out of the gap, it's $8 million less than what current assumptions assume it would be. Also, I see, I don't know what year it is, and maybe staff knows, but when does the jail bond get paid off? Because I know we have 2024.
2024.
All right. So, 2024, you know, it's within the same 20-year period we're talking about. That tax fortunately does not sunset. You know, when we passed it many years ago, we said no sunset, knowing and understanding that the city would be a bigger city with more needs, and then when that, you know, year, you know, would come and go, we would have a windfall because we no longer have to service the debt on the jail facility, yet the utility users' tax is still coming to the city coffers. So, that's going to be, you know, of benefit to us. Also, I want to ask, I know that we have different labor unions, and different employees pay different amounts towards their retirement, but I believe the peak is somewhere around, is it 12% or 13%? I'm talking about PERS. Where are we, Mr. City Manager? Do you know roughly, and if we were at the max with all our labor units, how much money would that potentially impact the city budget if every employee were paying the maximum allowable?
The, the 12% is for public safety. The employee contribution, that's the minimum employee contribution, if you will, is 9%. And through negotiations in the past, they've gotten to 12% as part of some of the-
What about non-public safety?
Non-public safety, their employee contribution is 8%. And I believe everybody is contributing their fair share.
And that's the max?
Anything would be more than that. I mean, if they agreed to pay, if the bargaining units agreed to pay more than the 8%, certainly then they could do that. But, but right now, they're paying 8%.
All right. I, I just understand that other cities, non-sworn, are higher than 8%, that some are as high as 12. And I'm just saying, if we were to be able to get there, that also would, would save some money. And, and having gone through all this, I think there's still a need for a tax increase if we want the city to operate at a higher, more effective, more efficient, stronger level. I will also submit to you that if we put something on the ballot today, meaning 2018, I believe all you need is a majority vote. I know there's been some discussion of a measure that would limit that and make it a 2/3 in 2020 or beyond, but I think that failed because we, as the Big 11 mayors, did a very strong campaign. We got Coca-Cola and Pepsi and others to pull back on that. But that could come back in the future, because a lot of cities are doing these tax increases, and there are special interests that, that vote against them. And so, I, I think there's still a need, you know, for additional taxes. I just think that the nature of what cities do tend to be permanent, and even though we're talking about this PERS surge, where a lot of employee benefits are going to come for a period of time, then they're going to drop down because of the new contracts that we're doing that are lower levels on retirement. You know, we won't use the money just for one-time projects. I guarantee you, if we do this tax increase, and should it pass, some of those dollars are going to go to ongoing expenditures, expenditures. At OCTA, something we did was we targeted those monies basically for, you know, by and large for capital projects. There are very few dollars out of Measure M1 or Measure M2 that go to ongoing operational costs, such as employee wages, for example. So, as a consequence of that, you know, when Measure M1 ended, you know, we had certain freeways widened, we had, like the Santa Ana Freeway, then the tax went away, but, you know, we were pretty much with a balanced budget. I know in cities, when you tend to do this, because so much of our costs are also, you know, labor-intensive, it's very hard to do, say, you know, we're going to tax increase. I know in El Monte, Mr. City Manager, you said when you were there, they had a tax increase. It had a sunset, and I think it was five years or something like that, and it was probably a flash in the pan. Before you know it, the five years were done. Can you just speak to that briefly, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. When I became City Manager in 2013 in El Monte, they had, they had a measure that was going to expire that November, Measure GG, as a matter of fact. And when it was first implemented five years earlier, which would have been 2008, the goal of that measure was to actually build up their reserves. But what happened is the recession occurred, and, and all of it went into operations. And even with that additional measure, the city went from 425 or whatever it was, down to 290. They lost 25% of the workforce, even with the tax measure. So, five years later, it was going to expire, and they really had not built up their reserves, so they wanted to reauthorize, and they did go for a reauthorization, but it went by faster than they expected.
Got it. Thank you. So, anyways, look, I think I'm going to call for the vote in a moment, but let me just state for the record that I, I can support like a 1% in perpetuity. I respect my fellow council members, and I understand your arguments for 1 and 1/2, and for the concept of the sunset. So, even though I'm not in favor of that, I'm not, you know, violently opposed, because I, I believe and I know that the city needs it. But should this motion fail, should there be a motion for a lower level at 1%, I think that, that's something that's more acceptable. So, right now, we have a motion by Councilor Benavides. I think there's a second by Villegas. I believe it's for 1 and 1/2 for a 10-year period, and then going down to a 1% for the following 10-year period, and then zeroing out at the end of 20 years. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I hadn't made a motion, but I'll go ahead and make it now, just an additional comment, that it is definitely, it's something that I've wrestled with. I didn't actually support the matter at the last meeting, because one is because it was in perpetuity. I've been wrestling with this, because I, I agree with a lot of the comments of the speakers, that, that cost of living is going up, and I, I really don't like the idea of the city adding potentially, although we wouldn't be the ones adding, but presenting the question before the voters, for potential addition of, of additional expense just to, to buy everyday products. However, if we didn't find ourselves in a situation in such a challenging fiscal situation, and the reality is that we were there years ago, I sat in the seat a number of years back when we were very close to, to having to file bankruptcy. And, and I don't ever want to see our city in that situation, see that, that the city has an organization, council and city, but ultimately, I don't want to have the residents see significant decreases in, in services that they, that they deserve, that they pay taxes to, to, to receive. So, this is, in essence, out of obligation to ensure that we are able to maintain some of the essential city services, address some of the, the needs that have significantly come up, such as homelessness. Although I do hear some of the comments that some of my colleagues have made, in that we do need to be much more clear between now and, and, and election time, and even one on what we're going to prioritize, how we're going to be responsible with the oversight of these, of these dollars. And then, again, including oversight, citizens, review, council or committee or task force to ensure that, that the city is being very responsible going forward. Frankly, part of my, my concern is that we would see this as, as new funds, and, and, you know, I won't be here, some of us won't be here, and that then decisions are made where raises are extended, and we see it as an opportunity to, to go out and, and spend the city's, the residents' tax dollars in a not very fiscally prudent way. And so, I know that one of the things that what I want, with that comment, what I want to reiterate is that there would be, part of the, 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 the motion is that there would be a, a citizens' review oversight board on this to, to ensure that we're monitoring this well, and that we're keeping a very, only fiscally prudent decisions as part of how the funds are expended. So, with that, yes, that is my motion, 1 and 1/2 for the first 10.
Yeah. Let me go to the same Andrew, then Councilor Vince Sarmiento, now wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to Councilman Benavides's concerns, and also your comments, Mr. Mayor, about the OCTA capital program, if the council was to go with the 1 and 1/2 version, what I would recommend is that you direct staff to come back with, get back to this body with the CIP program, because I think in the, in the initial years, we will be able to afford such a program, and I think that there's a great need out there. I'll just give you one example. Our new interim Parks and Recs Director, his first day on the job was July 3rd. So, in preparation for the 4th of July, in preparation for the 4th of July fireworks display at Centennial, he went to get, you know, familiar with that park. On his first day, came back and reported to me that he had observed a lot of dead trees. In fact, probably in the, in the neighborhood of 90 trees. I had no idea. And it's just, just to give you an idea of our medians, when I was last here as your Public Works Director, our medians looked very nice, you know, we were before the drought, everything was green and all of that. Our trees are diseased. We're going to see a lot of tree failures. There's just, I'm just going on to give you examples of some of the issues that aren't surfacing as immediate right now, but they're there. They're there already. You know, one of the other things that this new interim director, new fresh pair of eyes that told me is that a lot of our pools are only open twice a week for an hour and a half each. I mean, this is, we've already cut back to the comment of Councilman Tina Harrell, that the second floor is, is pretty much a ghost town. Well, that goes for a lot of our services. We're already at minimum level of service with the heat wave the other day, or the other week. I was really, really torn to hear, really troubled to hear that some of our, our pools are only open twice a week for an hour and a half each. I mean, so, these, I'm just touching on a few of our needs, the fact that we're operating at bare minimum, and so, but back to the issue of concern about how we spend the money, I would strongly recommend at least come up with a capital program that we could present to you on, on how some of these can be used for one-time monies, because there's a great need out there.
I would include that as part of the motion there. Thank you. Councilor Vince Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so, it sounds like, and it appears that there is majority support for this to be placed on the ballot. From what I understand, Mr. City Manager and Madam City Attorney, this is not imposing some sort of tax or assessment. This is just simply asking the question. Correct? So, with that, let me just wordsmith what I'm seeing in front of me, since this does look like it will go forward. What I would recommend, or maybe make a friendly amendment to the maker of the motion and the maker of the second, is to interlineate some language, because we know that homelessness is such a large problem in our community, that I would start the consideration for the ballot title to read "Santa Ana Neighborhood Safety, Comma, and Homeless Prevention, Comma, and Essential City Services Enhancement Measure." And for there to be a, to eliminate the 1 and 1/2% in, instead, or excuse me, to, to put 1 and 1/2 cents instead of 1 and 1/2%. Because 1 and 1/2% of what? That's misleading. That's, that's vague. I think, you know, if this is capped and this is defined specifically by 1 and 1/2 cents, is something that we can work with, and is clear for the voters when they go to the ballot and decide on whether or not they want to support this. Finally, I think it was mentioned, but just for clarity, I would also make, want to make sure that the buy-local program is part of this, is part of this motion as well, so we could show consideration for our friends and the car dealers. Thank you.
If I may, a council member-
Yes, go ahead.
As a result of the last direction at the previous meeting, staff is already working on a buy-local program, and we hope to bring that to the council's second meeting in August or so. So, we're already-
Very good.
We've already been given direction, and we're already working on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, look, I think there's been some good discussion here. I think we all see the need, you know, for different levels. I think this is going to pass, and so I say, let's move forward. But again, I personally would be more comfortable at 1% or 1 cent to Councilor Vince Armento's point versus 1 and 1/2 cents. So with that, additional comment? If not, we'll vote. Go ahead.
A quick question there for staff. There was a comment with regard to a little bit of wordsmithing. Is there, can we, are we locked to the description exactly the way it's worded here in what was presented to us tonight? Or is there any option to do a few just grammatical changes? Can that be part of the motion to allow for some, and maybe this is for that city attorney?
Because you're adopting the resolution establishing tax this evening, you have to have the precise language you're going to use. You do have a deadline, which you could continue this to a date specific or have a special meeting, but tonight, if you adopt this tonight, you need to have the language in the resolution tonight that will appear on the ballot.
But he's not talking about the major resolution. He's talking about swordsmithing potential.
Well, the question is contained within the resolution.
And the reason I ask is that point with regard to right now, the wording that we have, "San Ana Neighborhood Safety, Addressing Homelessness and Essential City Services," the suggestion was homelessness prevention. And I think there was some, in a previous conversation with that city manager, the, even that wording, the addressing homelessness was one of the, I think was one of the recommended. The question is, are we, whether we're going to actually be able to, one of the questions on the mind, whether we're going to actually be able to prevent homelessness by way of this, this dollars coming in or whether it gets more along the lines of addressing the homelessness issue. So just, so it was one of the questions that I have. And then if we're going to, the issue of homelessness is a priority issue, so I would recommend if we're going to, again, look at doing some changes, potentially in the description, adding, bringing that up to the, as the priority item. So that was, that was why I was, you know, there's a few minor things of that sort. The other is the dates. I'm assuming that the dates are going to be changed here on the 1.5 or cents until 2028 and then?
1 cent.
And then providing, you know, then reduce to, to 1 cent in 2029. Basically, do we need to correct that? Right now, that's not reflected, the changes are not, or is that automatic?
Whatever it is that you are voting on tonight needs to be articulated for placement in the draft resolution.
I think you did that earlier, and the clerk got it, right? She got it.
Okay. All right. I'm just, there was a change on the wording up in the title, and that's fine. I don't want to get into any more specifics.
And we'll accept the friendly amendment, correct?
Okay. So also the friendly amendment by Councilor Vince Armento. And Madam City Manager?
By the dates, so 10 years, this revenue measure would start in April of 2019. So we would go to?
10 years from that point, okay.
10 years from that point. So we go through 2029 for the 1.5 and then through 2039 for the penny.
All right. Is that acceptable? All right. All right, so Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Armento?
Aye.
Councilmember Tina Harrow?
Aye.
Mayor Polito?
No, but yes on a 1%.
Okay. Councilmember Benavides?
Aye.
Councilmember Villegas?
Aye.
Councilmember Solorio?
No.
Okay. Motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay, let's go on to the next item. I believe that's 55D.
Let's backtrack to that, to that vote again, so.
I voted no.
So that, was that a 4-2?
It passes.
4-2 vote passes.
No, I understand, but I think there was some misleading comments made during the discussion. The presumption was that the mayor was supportive of the motion. So if now we're?
I don't believe so. I said that if the motion failed, I'd vote for a 1% tax.
But it didn't fail.
It didn't fail. So I voted no for the 1 and 1/2. I would have voted yes for a 1%, or a 1 cent tax. If that was confusing, I apologize.
It was very confusing because it was very misleading. Because the only reason these edits were made, because you were supportive on the record for the motion that was being discussed.
I don't believe so. The clerk and the whole audience heard.
And as somebody who was supportive of the motion, I'd move to reconsider that vote.
Well, and, you know, the fact is, the fact is, Mr. Mayor, is that you know you're going to be challenged this November, and you're protecting yourself instead of protecting the city, and that's what's frustrating. I'm putting my neck on the line to make sure that we're solvent, and you've made a decision to go the other way. That's?
I'm happy to vote yes if we can go to 1 cent tax.
The maker of the motion would have to accept the reconsideration.
Accept the reconsideration.
All right, is there a motion for a 1 cent tax?
No, we're actually, we're actually procedurally needing a vote on whether you want to reconsider that discussion, since a vote had been taken. There's a motion and a second, so you would vote on whether you want to open up this conversation.
Those that want to reopen up the conversation, vote aye.
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 No.
So the, it's opened back up?
The motion passes, so we basically renew the conversation on that, on the item that you had previously voted on. And the action is rescinded, and now you're having a new conversation on that item.
So I'll just start if I can make comment, Mayor. I also heard you indicate that you were okay with the 1 and 1/2, with basically the motion, however, and you were clear that you'd prefer the 1%. But there is this, you know, one of the members of the council has indicated from the beginning that they were not going to be supportive. It's unfortunate, because I think it is something that none of us want to do. And, but we recognize that there's, there's a need, as you articulated. And I do agree that it is a misleading and personally protecting oneself, I don't want to go on the record for raising taxes, or in fact, we're not, but for presenting the question. But it's a very sly way of being able to ensure that the city could potentially, could have the question out to the voters, but not being the one to, to vote in favor of putting the question out there. So it's something that I think if we really genuinely see this as a need, then we should stand by that and?
And I articulated earlier that I believe there are ways we can save some money, keep the jail open. That's about, you know, $8 million. In 2024, we're going to have the money coming back from the utility users' tax, and I believe we can have our non-public safety employees pay more than the 9%. So I'm in favor, and I stated so clearly earlier, of a 1 cent tax increase. And also, I think we should do it in perpetuity. I think, I think when you peel it back and you sunset it, it sets you up for a very difficult situation. So if there is a motion for that, I'm, I'm in favor of putting that before the voters.
Is that a motion?
I'll make an emotion. Is there a second? It dies for lack of a second.
Well, I think it's fine. We have it on record, so now let's go back to the official, the original motion.
So I will go back with my original motion, basically, as articulated, I think it was necessary to have this additional discussion. And frankly, I was reconsidering my position for the same reason. Basically, I don't want to stick my neck out there, but I recognize that it's for, in the best interest of our residents. As much as I don't want to, and I hate the idea of potentially adding an additional, even though it's a penny and a half tax on every dollar, however, services to our community will significantly be impacted, reduced, and our citizens and our community deserve better than to be, than to have already their, the services that need to actually be enhanced be reduced anymore. So in the interest of our community, I'm going to be, again, making the motion back as it was originally stated.
If I can, Madam City Attorney?
Go ahead.
Can you tell us what motion is before us?
Yes, the one Councilor Benavides just made.
The one that Councilor Benavides just made.
Okay. So the mayor's, I just want the mayor to be on record, and I want to support, I want to support his motion, not because I believe in it, because I just want him to commit to something.
I made the motion.
Be on record.
Yeah. So the mayor had made a motion, which was his position died for lack of a second. So his position as articulated is not on the floor, and it's been replaced now by Councilmember Benavides's motion. I don't know if you want to renew that motion or not, but that's where we are now, is Councilmember Benavides's motion is on unless there's a substitute motion made, then you would look for a second.
Or is there a second for Councilor Benavides's motion?
Exactly, you look for a second.
Either that, or if you want to rearticulate your motion, I'll second your motion.
You already heard it.
All right, I'll second your motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'm fine with that.
That's true.
Benavides's motion would have died for a lack of a second.
So my motion, just for the record, is that it's a 1 cent in perpetuity sales tax that we put before the voters.
So long as you support it?
I support it. All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Armento?
Aye.
Councilmember Tina Harrow?
Yes.
1 cent vote in perpetuity.
All right, make a friendly amendment as to the time. You want to say 1 cent for 20 years? I'll go for that.
The motion on the floor?
I'm happy to accept a friendly amendment if that's going to make a difference.
You already voted 1, not 1 and 1/2.
We'll get a recess, a recess.
All right, let's take a five-minute recess. Is there a second to that?
Did it go away?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Now it's time for discussion, right? Motion is second.
There is.
So I do have a question of staff. There's a recommendation, was your motion perpetuity or?
No, no, I amended it to 20 years.
20 years. So now, question to staff. There's a reason why we're looking at, staff's recommending a 1.5 versus a 1%. Can you explain a bit to us as to what the, that additional, essentially it represents $20 million, correct, annually?
That is correct.
So basically, present your argument right now, because this is, this is the chance, and then we're going to make a decision.
Thank you, Councilor Benavides. The reason staff is recommending the 1.5 is because based on the projections in terms of the shortfalls, it would take the full 1.5 to bridge across the projected high-water mark with purse costs before they plateau. With the 1 cent, of course, let me just preface that any increase in revenue is sorely needed. So we're not going to say no to, we're not going to say no to anything. But what we wanted to say is the 1.5 actually covered the bulk of that deficit five years out before it stabilized, if you will. In the interim, as costs are rising, there would be an opportunity in the first three years, in particular, maybe four, to really, with that extra money, that was, that would not be fully spoken by the cost increases, to do very much-needed capital improvements in our parks, our sidewalks, our streets, et cetera. And with the 1 cent proposal, it'll keep us from, it'll keep us solvent for a few years there, and all these other things that the mayor mentioned are real possibilities. Labor is never a sure thing to get employees to contribute more. It's to be bargained, and it's not easy to get. The marshals, I really hope that they continue to need our jail, but right now, all we have is a two-year contract, so we have to be conservative and assume that they could walk away. The thing, the scene at the federal level could be, you know, seems to be very volatile, but we hope that that will, will continue past the two years that we're forecasting. And the jail is a sure thing. The debt on the jail does expire 2024, so that is a true, that's a true thing here. We're looking at a forecast of with, without these variables that we can't control. If we went with the 1 cent sales tax, we would have an increase of 9.7 in 1920, fiscal year 1920, in fiscal year?
2020.
1920, fiscal year 1920. And in fiscal year 2021, we would be with the surplus of 1.6. And then possibly, as soon as 2021, without any, any of these things that we can't, we can't really control, we could be back in the negative situation of 7.2 and so forth. So it's really hard to tell. The 1.5 would provide greater stability for the known increases that we have. Now remember, these projections, none of these projections include a downturn in the economy, which everybody says is, within the next two years, a very real possibility. But not mentioning that, just focusing on the positive aspects of this, the 1.5, in short, would allow us to do positive improvements in our, in our infrastructure, and the other one would not. The other one would allow us to sort of maintain status quo at best.
To clarify, Mayor, you mentioned OCTA and Measure, both Measure M and how they were able to articulate a number of capital improvement projects because of those funds. You had also then picked up on that, Mr. City Manager, and actually suggested that we, request from staff, a clear capital improvement calendar on practical items, needs, infrastructure needs, capital needs out in the community, that we would be able to address if that 1.5 were to pass. If that 1.5 were to be reduced back to 1, down to 1, would there be still opportunity for some of those capital projects? Or is that part of what you're saying, that it would be less certain?
It would be a lot less. What the penny would be a lot less. You'd have basically one year where you could actually do some of, some capital improvements, as opposed to, you know, three or four years, solid improvements with the 1 and 1/2 cent. And what I was proposing is, if this measure passed, was passed by the voters in November, then we would come, the revenue doesn't start to come in until April, so it's part of the following fiscal year's budget, we would prepare a capital program for your approval at that point. That would be a multi-year plan for the infrastructure.
And Mayor, your, your thoughts, rationale behind?
My rationale is that, look, 1 and 1/2 cent is undoubtedly more money. It's a, it's a third more money. It's $60 million a year versus $40 million a year. So, you know, no argument there. What I'm saying is that it's, for me, tougher to put that before the voters, knowing that there's $8 million, that we ought to be working really hard to, to continue to keep the jail full. And by the way, it's not 100% full, but if we work with the marshals, there's an $8 million windfall there, if you will, that right now, staff is saying it's zero, because our contract only goes for two years. Well, let's go work on another contract. Jail's still going to be there three years from now and 10 years from now. Let's fill it up and bring in that $8 million times, you know, times 10 years. We can do that. I'm also saying that there's other dollars. If we go back to our, our unions and say, we want you to pay more on your portion of the retirement, much of this problem is CalPERS. And, and I believe we can ask our employees to pay more. It's not a popular thing to do, but I think we need to, we need to do that. I also believe that in 2024, we're going to have a windfall that's I also believe that in 2024, we're going to have a windfall that's going to come from the, you know, the half-cent sales tax that we did years ago. Actually, it was a 1-cent sales tax on utility users' tax. That's going to come back to the budget. And, and, and look, you know, there's cannabis revenue. I think that that's going to continue to grow, and it should, and it should come in and help the budget. So I am, you know, personally, more comfortable, even though I know there's need, I'm more comfortable with $40 million a year. I think that's still a lot of money to ask of this community. I think the sales tax, unfortunately, it's maybe the easiest thing to do, but it's a regressive tax. It'll go after everybody that's, you know, buying goods and services here in the city. And so, that's why I believe that 1% is the right number. I also think it's going to be easier to get it passed. I mean, we can sit here and say, "1 and 1/2 cents," and it's $60 million. We could say 2 cents, and that's 80 million. Every time you go up, people are going to think about it more, and they're going to say, "Do I want to vote for it, or do I not want to vote for it?" I think at 1 cent, you have a greater chance of getting it passed. You know, at OCTA, we even went with a half-cent sales tax, and that polled better, and it passed twice. And because it was county-wide, we raised billions of dollars and we were able to do, you know, the freeway widening. We're now doing Measure M2, which is going to be the $400 million streetcar project. It's enabled us to do a lot of things, and we in San Ana are going to be the main beneficiaries of much of those dollars because of the way we've been able to get them to come here to San Ana. So, so anyways, I think we've had some discussion, and if folks are good with the vote, I say, "Let's go ahead and vote." So, roll call vote, please. This is the 1%?
1%.
1, 1 cent, not 1%, 1 cent, 1 penny.
Can you start over there, Madam Clerk?
For 20 years. Councilmember Solorio?
Start with me, let me vote first.
Mayor Polito?
Yes.
Councilmember Solorio?
No.
Councilmember Villegas?
No.
Councilmember Benavides? Councilmember Tina Harrow?
No.
Councilmember Sarmiento? Motion fails.
All right. So let's go on to the next item for now.
No, we go back to the original motion.
Go back to my original motion.
All right.
You'll have to make that motion, since it's a new motion.
So, my motion is for 1.5 or 1 and 1/2 cents for 10 years, followed by the 1 cent for 10 years with a sunset.
Roll call vote.
A second.
Councilmember Solorio?
Solorio, no.
Councilmember Villegas?
Villegas, yes.
Councilmember Benavides?
Aye.
Mayor Polito?
No.
Councilmember Tina Harrow?
Yes.
Councilmember Sarmiento? Motion passes.
Okay, on a 4 to 2. Okay, thank you, I think good discussion. Let's go on to the next item. I believe that is 55D isn't David. I would entertain a motion on item 55D. Councilor Villegas?
So moved.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? 55D.
Oh, aye.
The annuals.
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. 55E isn't Edward. I entertain a motion.
Will be the item.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
I have one comment, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
You know, this, you know, at some point interacts with our San Ana Work Center and has another idea of a missed opportunity in the short term, but a better opportunity in the future. We have moved our San Ana Work Center from the depot to a place here closer to City Hall. It's largely staff employees that support that center, although we do have partners from the county and the feds and others. And as was mentioned before, we have the second floor of City Hall empty. One of my recent questions when I found about this is, why didn't we try to get the San Ana Work Center to move into the second floor of City Hall, or, you know, make some adjustments to have them here and then that we have a true one-stop shop? I think at the time that this decision was being made, we still had a big homeless population outside, and some of the employees did not want to work under those circumstances. That is understandable and respectable, but obviously, that situation has changed. It's my understanding that we've entered into a five-year lease. Maybe we have, maybe we haven't, but if nothing else, you know, there's the opportunity that maybe in five years, we could consider moving that operation into City Hall. I know, too, that some of the employees have had an idea that, hey, we do have quite a bit of available real estate, if you, if you will, here inside City Hall, and we ought to consider leasing some of that, you know, towards others, whether they be government agencies or profit agencies. So that's an opportunity for us to look for in the future as we continue to work on agreements such as this one. Let's try to keep that in mind and see if there isn't a better resolution to that situation. Thank you.
Any other comments? With that?
We already took a vote.
Yeah, so that's it? I think you held up the vote, right, or?
I made comments as we should discuss them.
Right, before the vote. So, call for those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, two things. I need if four members that supported the measure on the sales tax item, if those four members are okay to author an argument, I'd like to put that in the record.
Sure.
Yes.
Nope.
You have three yeses.
Okay, great.
Okay, with that, item 75A.
And then also, if I can ask for an oath of office, we have a youth commissioner that's been sitting patiently and listening into our meeting.
I was not aware. Let's go ahead.
Joseph Acevedo has been appointed to the youth commission.
All right, go ahead.
They, by the way, have new social media channels, a new logo. This youth commission's on fire. They're doing a lot of great work, so, welcome.
Do you solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties which I am about to enter?
I just asked him, "How old are you?", and he smiled and he said 16. So, it's a great age, and I'm glad he's joined our youth commission. So with that, I would now like to open up a Pelican Amendment Application 201805 to reason on the property located 1440, 1450, East 17th Street for relocation of Ednovate Charter High School. And I believe I have four speakers. Okay, actually, five. Adam Sultan, please, or Sultan, and maybe it's Asim Sultan, followed by Alvaro Ramirez, followed by Cecilia Iglesias. Go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. I live on the street adjacent to the proposed Ednovate location, along with about 20 people here, if you would just stand up to represent. We also have 65 other members of the community that have signed a petition against this. I want to start by saying that the residents of our community want nothing more than for businesses to occupy the dilapidated and vacant buildings on 17th Street. The homeless problem there is out of control. However, we will not compromise the safety of our families in that pursuit. I want to be clear that our objection to the school side is based on a grave public safety concern that emergency vehicles may not have clear passage to our street multiple times a day. Allow me to reference the zoning requirements for C-5 zoning under Section 45428, Part B, which reads, "The design of vehicle accessways, driveways, parking areas shall be safe and practical." I direct you to page one of the exhibit that I have given to each of you, the first page. If you want to hold this up, Michael. Ednovate has determined that the best possible pickup and drop-off zone is a one-way driveway with entrance on Wright Street and an exit on 17th Street. They have also stated that they will have 500 students. Even if every single student car pools, every single one of them, that is roughly 250 cars, even if you shave off 25% of those who may walk or take the bus, that's still upwards of 200 cars that will need to enter and exit through this loading zone multiple times a day. Now, even if they stagger the start and end times for the students, we're still talking about over 100 cars all at once, entering on Wright Street and exiting this zone multiple times a day. We measured the distances at each point of their site plan. You will see that the current plan that they have proposed is limited to 25 cars along the arrows. As you can see, the 25th car lining up in queue to enter will be blocking any cars from exiting their drop-off zone. Now you have a complete blockage of 17th Street going this way. You want to switch to the next one? What happens next? Well, cars begin, once this is jammed, cars begin to reroute down Linwood, which is a residential street, excuse me, residential street, and swoop up to a more convenient, in fact, a much more efficient drop-off and loading zone that happens to be right in front of about five or six house driveways. Those driveways will be blocked at those times for who knows how long, multiple times a day, every single day. You tell me, how does a city official in good conscience knowingly create a traffic condition that will encourage parents to either drop off here or somewhere on the other side of 17th Street from where children will jaywalk? Or drop off over here where we will, our homes will be blocked by the traffic and the drop-off zone that I circled here in the yellow? This is a much more efficient plan than what they have proposed. We are not opposed to the school. We are opposed to the location and the planning of their drop-off zone. This facility is clearly inadequate, and it will create a grave public safety concern for this neighborhood, especially East Side Avenue. I still can't believe how someone came up with this loading scheme. I mean, either this was a mistake that they missed completely, or we're, we the public...
You're out of time, but you've got a lot of folks, so I'll let you continue speaking. Do you have a proposed solution?
Well, I'm just urging you to reconsider and consider the safety implications of this plan and vote no and do the right thing for the, for the community. We support the school, but not this location. It's bad for the students, bad for the parents, and they will suffer just as much as the residents of our city.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Now we have Alvaro Ramirez.
Dear Councilman and Mr. Mayor, my name's Alvaro Ramirez, and I'm actually going to reread an email that I sent out to Benavides. I actually live on East Side. I would like to kindly bring your attention or opposition to the construction of the Ednovate Charter High School on 17th and Wright. As a valued member of the community for over 27 years, the traffic flow noise generated by the school is unacceptable. The more I have dialogue with fellow members of the community whom will be affected by the bill, the opposition increases. Therefore, I don't only speak for my household, but for other members of the community who have not been able to attend the meetings or face communication issues such as the inability to utilize electronic mail or speak English. I trust you as leaders in serving our community who strive to cater to all realms of our neighborhood and tax-paying residents. Furthermore, I'd like to indicate that while the traffic has been analyzed by the planning members, information has not been presented to the community members. The claim is made that it will not affect the neighborhood, however, there's a possibility of human error in the analytics. Many proposals look great on paper, but I strongly believe the building of this institution will be catastrophic to our immediate community. This neighborhood was our desired location to grow as a family due to the low traffic flow and quiet environment. This is all at risk. I'd like to end my statement with my love for it, passion, and passion for education. Simply because we disagree with the establishment of an education institution in our neighborhood does not mean we oppose the benefits education promotes and creates in our society. I serve as a mentor and leader for the California State University and donate endless hours by facilitating future opportunities to marginalized students. Please assist us in stopping the build on Ednovate Charter High School on 17th and Wright Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia, followed by Mike Tardif.
Good evening, councilmembers. I just want to be short and fast. What I wanted to say is, like, I'm here to support the recommendation that the Planning Commission has brought before you guys, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mike Tardif. I live on 19th Street, just a couple of short blocks away from the proposed site of Ednovate Public Charter School. The main concern of the neighborhood seems to be traffic that the school could possibly bring to the area. There was a traffic study done for this, and it seems to be very well-laid out. First, the school has a no-drive policy for students, and half of those students are not of driving age. And the total amount of students is 460, it's not 500. There will be staggered start times. There will be traffic monitors on-site to enforce the school's drop-off and pickup rules. As you can see on the traffic flow map, there's ample provision for drop-off and pickup queues on the school property. The school is very aware, is very aware of the traffic concerns of the neighborhood and will continue to work with the neighborhood for the best traffic safety practices. I am excited to have such a fine college prep school in our neighborhood. Ednovate is partnered with USC and is supported by Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, Eli and Edith Brode Foundation, Riordan Foundation, USC Rosier School of Education. I believe that Ednovate Public Charter School will be an asset to Santa Ana and our neighborhood. Please support the Planning Commission recommendation to approve Ednovate Charter School at this location. Thank you.
We have another speaker, Darren Berberian.
Good evening, Darren Berberian, President of Golden West Communities. I represent the developer, Pacific West Communities. I just wanted to get in front of you today to let you know, we worked extensively, a very long time, on this project. We took very, very close consideration to traffic. Obviously, that is one of the biggest impacts of any new development. We had a traffic engineer complete a report. It was submitted with, to city staff. It went back and forth, and we were approved with conditions. So, our site plan that you see for, right in front of you there, was carefully considered to be the most efficient and the most, the reduction of any type of traffic on 17th Street. That was the goal from day one, was, we didn't want to have any queuing on 17th Street, and as you see it, was the most efficient we can produce. And that was approved by staff, or supported by staff and approved at Planning Commission. I'm here to answer any questions. We appreciate your consideration on the zoning change. We have two parcels on this project, and both parcels have this split zoning. It's kind of around the parking lot of budding up to the single-family residence. So, we asked your consideration to change that zoning so it coincides with the general plan and let our project move forward.
Did you talk to the residents about the impact?
We've had several, we had a sunshine meeting, and in that meeting, we had 20-somewhat residents. I believe some of the speakers were there. We've always been available to communicate with the community. I've given my cards after Planning Commission. I actually met with them right afterwards and said, "Let's talk, let's, you know, what issues do you have? How can I be of service?" I've given them all my cards, they have all my information. We have also attended two other association community meetings afterwards. So we have had several community meetings on this subject alone. So we have, we've been available the entire process.
Why don't you be available? I think we might have questions from council.
Sure. Sure.
Let me, before we continue, I know we did a lot of traffic studies. As Director Ming, could you please address the, the traffic issue?
Yes. Our planning staff, I'd like to invite our planning manager, Candita, to expand on the traffic information that we studied. But in terms of the information regarding what the Planning Commission recommended is for the city council to consider the zone change, the concern from the residents regarding the queuing of the vehicles, I did take a look at that, and potentially, there could be some revision to the site plan to allow all of the queuing to be on-site and potentially not even impact the street, and only be ingress and egressing from the primary street. So, that's something we can also work with the applicant as well if that is the concern, because there's some opportunity for us to look at some site plan modification to help with the circulation on the property.
Let me just ask a couple of questions, then please, councilmembers, please join in. This school, I think, goes in no matter what we vote tonight, right? This is just the technicality on a zone, a zoning issue.
You're correct, Mayor. The question here is for the zoning to be consistent with the general plan.
So, even if we don't know, they can still go in, it's just inconsistent.
They can still go in. Some of their addition would be reduced, but yes, they can still go in as a school. Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was not wrong on that fact. The other question is, this school is already in the city. This USC prep school is already here. It's on Seventeenth Street, I believe, just a little bit west of Broadway, on the south side of Seventeenth Street?
You're correct. They were located here in the city. They recently closed based on, I think, just a week and a half ago, they closed...
Because it was the end of the year.
Correct.
But I guess my point is, they didn't cause a lot of problems there, because I drive by there often. Most of the kids don't drive. These are young kids, so they don't have a lot of cars, and the parents drop them off, and some of the kids walk to school. So, we have some experience with what we're dealing with here. Would you agree with that? Can you speak to that? Candita?
Yes, we have not had any complaints in their current location.
And it's a similar, they have a similar amount of driveways and similar amount of students. They're not planning on changing that, correct?
They have less students at the, at the existing location, or the previous location. And again, the entrance is off of Seventeenth Street and circles around through the parking lot and out.
So, it's a very similar situation. Coincidentally, it's the same street, same single ingress, egress than, than what they have right now.
With a divided median, yeah.
Got it. More thoughts or questions?
I have some questions.
Please, go ahead.
To our staff, is there, there's obviously, anytime I see one member have a lot of background on a item, I'm sure there's meetings and so forth, and we all have the right to do that. Did you meet with anyone, any consultants for this, for this organization?
Did I personally? No, no, sir.
Was there any, anyone else besides the gentleman that's here before us that spoke to you about this?
I have not met with the applicant myself. As you know, I recently joined the city, so this project precedes me.
So, who meets with the applicant?
Generally, our staff do, our planning staff.
Who in staff has met with the applicant's representatives or the applicant?
The project planner, and the project planner on this project was, pardon, a Scarlett Marr.
Okay. And so, the project planner was Scarlett Marr?
A Scarlett Marr, yes.
So, one of the things that the mayor is saying is that this school exists and that there hasn't been, been any issues. I can't, I will not dispute that. I'll give him that argument. I think what the residents are saying is they're concerned about the expansion. So, the fact that the school will continue to exist, that is a non-issue for me at this point. The issue is the quality of life that our residents are going to experience with an expansion. The applicant came in, and he said he went through the sunshine ordinance and so forth, and that there was communication involved. I did see residents who have been reaching out via email, they've been pretty tenacious about protecting a quiet neighborhood that, that has been quiet for quite some time. And they speak about their neighborhood as a very close-knit neighborhood where everyone knows each other. And now they're concerned about that being changed because of an expansion. So, is the need for expansion, we have to weigh out, is the need for expansion versus quality of life? I think that's what I'm looking at.
The way that the zoning is set up, the majority of the site is currently Zone C-5, and that portion of the site is existing non-conforming. So, there is no, no, school is allowed there by right. There is a single strip, if I can pull up the PowerPoint presentation, you can take a look at, there is a portion of the site which is totally zoned R1. It's a separate lot. It is not existing non-conforming. It was added to, I mean, it is exist, excuse me, it is existing non-conforming.
Could you put that up just so we understand what we're voting on?
Okay. The site on the right that is red is currently Zone C-5. It has an overlay zone of R1, of, excuse me, R1B, which allows, we put that over in, on our zoning ordinance to allow parking only, no structures for commercially zoned uses. It's an old designation that we've had for many, many years, and we're phasing out right now. That piece of property is one lot, and the, and the building there exists right now, and in that building, by right, they can have the school there. They're talking about adding a four-to, four-plus-hundred-square-foot addition on the rear of the building, and I can show you the site plan for that as well. And that rear addition wouldn't only be allowed to be 5% because it's an existing non-conforming building. So, we could do that 5%, they would only be able to do half of that use by right. They did receive, the Planning Commission considered and received a conditional use permit so that they would be able to build their entire structure that they wanted to build, which was the 400-plus addition. But that 200 or so-foot addition would be allowed as, under our non-conforming use section.
So, the, the question is really expansion? Do we want to allow expansion? I still don't feel comfortable that there has been enough communication with the residents of that area. I would recommend that we table this until there is communication with the residents that you have behind you and see if there's anything that can be done to...
Do you want a certain continuance and bring it back?
I, I would say continuance. Right now, I would vote against it. I think that's, that's probably the best protocol at this point.
Any other thoughts? Councilor Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a quick question. So, you have this building, and you want to expand, or the question more is for the gentleman here. This is an office building, right?
Correct.
So, you're going to make it into classrooms?
Correct.
And there is no classroom-type offices or anything like that on the first floor? What's the plan? You want to build up?
No, we're, we're utilizing the existing building as it sits there today. We are obviously repurposing it for a school. The only addition to that building is going to be a 4,900-square-foot additional building that's, that's attached to it. That's all, that's the only difference to what we're doing there today. That building is sitting as, as it is. We're not going up. We're just adding an additional 4,900 square feet.
I just don't see how this...
Are you adding students? I'm not clear on that.
So, they're existing, the school, yes, they're going to be, they're, they're rating it for, for more students than they currently have.
How many more?
Oh, Mallory, do you want to come up here for a second?
How many do you have right now?
In the current, I'm sorry?
Yeah, current, the current number right now?
What's the current enrollment right now?
220.
220. And at the current location you were just at, you're actually sharing that with another school. So, all the, the traffic and everything everyone's hearing, how many students in that, in that school right now that you guys were sharing it with? So, what was the total number for that existing building with both schools? Do you know?
I believe it was between 600 and 700.
Why don't you speak into the mic?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I believe it was between 600 and 700 in total at that campus.
Between the two schools?
Right. Currently, where their location is today, they are sharing it with two schools. So, actually, she's been talking about the traffic of 600 to 700 students currently. So, they're moving to this new location where enrollment will increase. That was the plan. This, this project was developed and designed to withstand up to 500 students.
However, next year, we will have less than 400. We'll eventually grow to 460, but for this upcoming 19, for the first year, 1920, it will not be 460. It will be less than 400.
And your traffic studies were done to what level?
To the, to the maximum extent. And that's been, that's been the, the process from the beginning, is that the traffic report has to be created based on their total enrollment, the total amount of students that this project will be approved for.
Councilor Insamiento?
Yeah, if I could have either Director Min or Candita maybe just be available. So, right now, it's 220 students that, that are at the campus that would be, that are attending, which will grow to 350, I guess, by the year 2019, 2020. But ultimately, it could grow to, or reach a capacity of about 460 students, right? So, we're talking about twice the number of students that you have at the 2020 level right now, or 220 level, I'm sorry. So, there will be an intensification of the original use that was at that site. Is that correct?
The, the use at the site was an office building, so the school is not there now. In terms of whether or not the school is permitted use, it is a permitted use by the zoning code as it stands today, so the school can actually move in. We would have to determine the capacity based on the current square footage, but the school can move in today. The proposed expansion will allow them to increase capacity to their desired level. Without the addition, they could still increase from their current enrollment today, but it won't be to the number that they're estimating.
Excuse me, Vince, how, how big is the existing building? I have no idea.
26, about 26,000 square feet.
26,000, and the little building you want to build is how big?
4,900 square feet, roughly.
2,900?
4,900.
So, almost 5,000. Got it. Thank you. Sorry, Vince.
So, I guess, you know, I'm trying to analogize this to some, to a discussion that we had a few meetings back when we were talking about reconfiguring a school on Grand Avenue, and I think they were talking about the, the mix of students, but yet the number of students was going to remain the same. I think the campus was Cedar Grove. So, the concern here is that this is distinct from that because this is increasing the enrollment. This is, you know, albeit by right, but that doesn't mean that the residents are going to be unimpacted.
Correct.
Because even though that you can move in by right and a campus is allowed there, there's still going to be a tangible effect on traffic there. And studies differ, so you can have a study that supports the fact that this could be absorbed by the footprint of the campus, but there is going to be also an impact to the, to the neighborhood that they haven't experienced, right? So, I think that's why they're all here. I think that's why they're concerned. How many meetings have there been where the neighbors have been invited?
The sunshine meeting.
Two, sunshine meeting and the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Well, I guess, Planning Commission meeting, that's a hearing here at City Hall. It's in these chambers, but there's only been one meeting in the neighborhood so the neighbors could have a chance to...
So, we attended two other community meetings as well from the association. So, and, and, and that's another thing I'd like to mention. So, we had our sunshine meeting, and we didn't have any opposition. We didn't have any serious concern. We, our entire school was here, our entire school was there. We had our traffic engineer there. I was there, and anyone who had issues had our information. Please come talk to us at every meeting we've been in. When Planning Commission was the first time I've ever heard of any opposition. As soon as Planning Commission was, it was approved, and, and we walked out, I ran out to them. I said, you know, we had, we had the sunshine meeting. We've, we've been at these other meetings. I haven't heard anything. Staff hasn't heard anything. I've been checking in with staff, our planner, constantly. Do we have any concern? Can I talk to anyone?
Thank you. Is there, is there a time sensitivity with this request for the variance as it would be sought?
I believe they're trying to prepare for the upcoming school year, which is starting this September.
Construction.
Construction, construction, correct. So, they want to be complete for the next school year, but...
Well, look, I, you know, and I don't want to put you on the spot, Director. I think the issue is, is that there seems to be a disconnect between the dialogue between the applicant and the neighbors that are going, that may or may not be impacted, right? So, to the extent that that can be somehow abridged or, you know, a forum, an additional forum could be provided, I don't see the harm, especially for the applicant. If the applicant is going to be proceeding, they don't want to proceed under adverse conditions, a hostile environment. The neighbors are going to be unhappy. If this is going to work, then it will, and if it's not, then, you know, we need to understand that as well. And so, I don't think the Planning Commission had the benefit of having, you know, as robust a discussion as we've heard from some of the neighbors here. I think that was, the, the presentation by the neighbor who showed us the schematic was very compelling. And I think that they have a right to be heard, and they have a right to discuss with the applicant in, in a, in a better setting than, than this one. So, I would recommend that we put this over and allow for that conversation to happen.
We'll be happy to work with the applicant if that's the case.
I'll second that.
30 days, or, or is there a timeline?
30 days.
Okay. Any other thoughts, councilmembers?
Support the continuance.
All right. Councilman Salinas is not here, Martina's not here, but there are five that are here. So, 30-day continuance, maybe you can use that time. Let's talk to the neighbors. I suggest showing them the traffic studies in more detail, because I believe that what you're doing is not as intense as the 700 that are right now on Seventeenth Street down at the church on Broadway. But, look, these folks don't get a benefit of that. They don't see what's happening right now, and I, you know, they're concerned for what they think could happen at, at the site. But I also know that your hours are staggered, right? I mean, I heard somebody say that.
Our, our staff will work with the applicant and the neighborhood.
More importantly, the neighborhood. I think the applicant knows everything. I don't think everything's gotten to the neighborhood, and they're scared, and, and we need to talk to them. So, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Let's go on to the next item. I'm going to recess the Housing Authority to the Housing Authority meeting and entertain a motion for our regular meeting, excused absence, and the item number three. Second, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Seeing no Housing Authority comments, I will adjourn and convene the successor agency meeting, entertain a motion on items one through three. Is, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. I assume there's no city council acting as successor agency comments, so I'll adjourn, and I'll bring it back to the work-study session, and take it to the city manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we'd like to present a general plan update from our Executive Director of Planning and Building Agency on the general plan development.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Good evening, Mayor and member of the council. I'm really excited to be here in front of you tonight to bring an update to you regarding the general plan update process and provide you with a status of where we are. But before I do that, I'd like to take a moment to introduce our planning staff, who's been working on this for the past two years now, in terms of reaching out to the community and getting us to the point here today. We have the lead, the lead planning manager, Candida, as well as our team, being led by Bernie Coverhal, Melanie McCann. We also have Ricardo, Soto, and Ivan, as well as Jill. They're all on our team, and Manny is part of the advanced planning team. They really have dedicated quite a few hours over the past two years to get us to date, and their efforts in terms of reaching out to the community, they met with over 500 members of the community, had 40 meetings throughout the community, and also met with the GPAC, and that all culminated in a summary, executive summary of the GPACs and what they have formulated, and that was delivered to you just a little bit over a week ago. In terms of the general plan update, I will let the staff present the information, but I just want to share that, you know, the last time the city updated general plan was in the early 80s, and it has been about almost four decades since we have had a major comprehensive update. So this is a really great opportunity for our community to look at how we can continue to celebrate our heritage and our diversity, but really reimagine or imagine ourselves in what we want to be moving forward in the future. You know, as a parent, I always tell my children, you know, there are a couple of life lessons that I've learned, is that timing is everything, but also, you know, you have to be prepared and be ready for that. And, you know, sometimes I'd rather be good than lucky, but, you know, I mean, lucky than good, but you won't, you're not going to be able to capitalize on those good fortunes if you are not planned or prepared to be able to accept that. So by taking this initiative in terms of planning ahead and really looking at, you know, our future, we're going to be able to capitalize on some of our good fortunes, such as our location here in Orange County, our having access, you know, great access to public transportation, great access to, you know, the regional transportation network. So really being able to capitalize on that. And I think by planning ahead and looking forward, we will be able to address some of the questions that the communities are wrestling with tonight, is that how do we better spend our resources? How do we focus our resources on things that we really need as, you know, we have scarce resources? We can start to plan ahead and say, you know, this year we'll devote towards capital improvements. This year we'll devote toward making parks and recreation. So it is really a fundamental policy document that will have long-lasting transformative impact to our community. So I don't want to take too much time, but I wanted to make that quick brief introduction. And Candida Neo will be presenting the status of where we are today, and some of the next steps in terms of this general process. I made a commitment that we will come back on a quarterly basis to provide an update to the council, but also as a way to get your feedback into this general plan update process with a goal of completing this in early 2020. Thank you.
Good evening. We're really excited to be here tonight. We'd like to talk to you about, oh, goodness, about, we came here tonight to talk to you about where we've been and where we're going, and to also to get some direction and interest from you about the work that we've already prepared. The general plan is the city's long-range policy document. It's a comprehensive collection of goals and policies, and it's also something that's mandated by the state of California. Every city has to prepare one, but most importantly, it is a tool, and it's something that we as staff can use and you as decision-makers can use to define your vision and to implement that vision. It can be used to evaluate, it is used to evaluate capital improvements, land use decisions, and even how we operate in terms of running our government and making decisions. In terms of the big-picture objectives, we're here tonight to look at how this community is going to transform. Min talked about how this is a transformative document. We're going to be addressing priority areas. We're going to be specific, we're a built-out city, but we are going to be looking at those areas that are important to the community and learning how to build on Santa Ana's assets and protect them as well. To do that, we're looking at a fresh approach. We've called, we're bundling a number of elements, or the seven mandated, required chapters of the general plan into three large sections. One is going to be the built environment. The other one is the natural environment, and then ultimately services and infrastructure. The specific elements you look at, in the previous general plan, we had small elements that dealt with specific issues. We're really focusing on 11 mandated elements in this, excuse me, they're not, seven mandated as well as four additional elements. Of particular importance to us are the mandated ones, which are land use, open space conservation, safety, noise. But we're also looking at urban design and architecture, and in the importance that plays in creating an image for our city and also, and also affecting what is economic development. And that's another important element that we'll be looking at in the future. We are, we also are looking at separately the circulation element and the housing element. The housing element, we're on an eight-year cycle. That will come back, we're three years into it, so we're not touching that now. The circulation element is moving forward. It's a joint effort between Public Works and our agency, and you should be seeing that early next year. In terms of the public, we've completed now three steps of the program. We completed our first public outreach program. You received a summary of that in about six to eight months ago. It was, we talked about the general plan video. It was a word-by-word description and then summary of all of the information that we took from 40 meetings, our summer youth program, numerous pop-up events citywide. Ultimately, we spoke to over 400 people regarding the general plan, and those were, that document and summary is available online. The next, the next group is the general plan advisory group. That was an advisory group of 14 members. We met with them. We had over 10 meetings during, excuse me, 14 meetings.
How much longer do you have to present, Candida?
About three more pages.
All right. Keep going.
Okay. All right. That shows issue identification issues, but mostly what they focused on doing was creating a vision. And this is the vision of Santa Ana and what we're basing our policy on. This is what, where we believe that we are going and with the general plan. Through that, we're taking that vision and developing core values. These are the things that will run through all of our policies and all of our elements, the land use element. Each one of them will look at health, equity, sustainability, culture, and education. Finally, our next steps are, we're, and we have released the RFP for our technical studies and the EIR and the background information for the general plan. We'll be, we'll be designing this summer our second community outreach effort with initiating at the end of the year. And our next council update, we expect to come back to you in December, at which we will bring forth the policy framework at that time, and then an adoption in March 2020. So with that, if you have any questions, we're here to answer them for you.
Thank you for that, Councilman Aviles.
I want to thank you men, Candy, for bringing this before us. As you mentioned, Mr. Ty, this has been 40 years since, I think maybe the mayor was here, but the rest of us were not at the time, or at least most of us were not. It's a, it's a, I appreciate even the way that the presentation starts, a shared vision for Santa Ana, and that clearly is one of the things that really will help drive a city, a vision, a shared vision, a vision towards a preferred future. And what hinders a city and an organization from thriving is when there isn't a vision, when there isn't clarity as to what direction we're going in. Some of us have been talking about the need to update our general plan for years, since we got here, and shortly thereafter, and I'm only a bit disappointed in that a few of us, including myself, will be gone before this is finalized and adopted, even though we've been seeing the need and pushing for it to happen, although I'm glad that it is, you know, here, and that it is moving forward. A couple of questions that I, that I have, a few years ago, I think just a couple years ago, there was a, I think it was called an envision plan. It's kind of like a, where there was some of the potential development zone or development areas. I think maybe Mr. Ty, your predecessor helped to, to lead and identify, had some staff input, some council input as to areas where we saw potential for development, for, yeah, for new development, for improvement. Will those, so one of my questions is whether those areas, those zones, are they being looked at and considered and folded into?
Many of those areas are, have been identified as priority study areas in the new general plan, and so we are moving forward on that, yes.
I know in certain areas, we've had to, we've resorted to specific plans, a harbor specific plan, several other specific plans, because we didn't have a general plan that's updated and that, you know, had clarity. So we had to kind of take certain sections in the city. Ideally, we're doing precisely what you're looking at, looking at the city as a whole, and that the potential and the opportunity that there is there. Things such as transit, is that, is that something that I imagine is being looked at? Streetcar is just one piece, but there are other elements that we hopefully, you know, in the years ahead, that we'll be able to see.
Yes.
Absolutely. And as we work with our mobility consultants, we are looking at different modes of transit as well. So certainly, the existing system we have, we want to enhance, but we're also looking at other ways to create potential for additional transit mode.
One of the questions, I know that there are certain areas or certain cities within, throughout the country that have been, that have been maybe more intentional about updating their general plans and have maybe even been, have best practices around, you know, being forward-thinking. Are we looking at, I appreciate the fact that we're looking and getting information, gathering and surveying internally here within the city, which is obviously important because these folks, the advisory committee, represented residents, businesses, number of different folks throughout the different segments throughout the city. It's important to gain their input, gain council's input. There are cities throughout that maybe are a number of steps ahead of us, from whom we can learn. Is that part of what we've been doing, or will that be part of the next steps of looking at best practices and how we can learn and incorporate?
Yes, we have been looking at best practices. We have gotten outreach, as a matter of fact, Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities had designed a number of policy programs, which we incorporated, and they looked at other cities as well, and we have been researching that as well. We're also working with a set of consultants who are bringing forward ideas and energies and ideas for implementation of different programs.
I also want to take an opportunity to recognize our staff, because between our staff, we have quite a deep number of years of experience. So our staff also brings a lot to the table, as, you know, Candida and the team I introduced to this council tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I, the last comment I'll make for the moment, anyway, is that there's definitely, I see tremendous opportunity for Santa Ana, the way, as you mentioned, from where we are geographically located, in, with relation with the rest of the county, transit, both, both transit, bus line, streetcar, rail, freeways, just the fabric, the history, the architecture, the grid systems in certain sections, particularly in our downtown, the fact that we have that urban nature and feel that's unique to us. So there are so many things that are working in our favor. If we do this well and lay things out with regards to an updated general plan, with updated zoning codes and such, there will be a significant amount of investment, of opportunity for continuing to take the city to where it can be. I know that one of the things when it comes to people, whether it be investors, whether it be developers, retail, housing, a number of different entities or that are looking to bring investment, they look at a smooth and clear path for a potential project. And when we don't have an updated plan, it just, it can be quite unclear, convoluted, and so I think the fact that, again, where we're going, I think it's a positive thing. So my, my assumption is that there will be different elements of housing, retail, industrial types of uses and zones, identifying how we maximize what we have, where there is opportunity to modify some of those uses. I'd be interested in following up to get a little bit more of a deeper dive. I don't want to take up too much time right now, but I do appreciate this, you know, an opportunity for the council to be able to hear and speak into. I don't know if you have any specific question. I know that was one of the things that you started with, is, right now, you gave us an update, but if there are any questions as far as direction, insight, that council would like to be able to speak into.
And, you know, we understand that you have very limited time today, so that's why we forwarded some information to you in advance. We can also forward this power presentation after this meeting. The thing we really want to get some feedback on is the vision that has been developed by the GPAC and some of the core values. We believe that those are a great, you know, they present a great base for us to move forward, so we get confirmation that will give us a really good direction to continue to move forward in the same path. So I'll be happy to meet with any council members to discuss, you know, the information in a different setting as well. Yes, sir?
One of the things that I would like, I would like for us to meet sooner rather than later, you know, we talk about partnerships with different entities. One of the things that I'm very cautious about is that there's a reason why there are district-approved charter schools in our city. I'll give you an example of a district-approved charter school. OSHA is a district-approved charter school. OSEA is a district-approved charter school. El Sol is a district-approved charter school, and so is Ed Cole Academy. The reason they're district-approved is because there has been a thorough research on what the educational levels and standards are at those particular schools. I would like, in our master plan, if we're going to be partnering with our educational partners, that we also put down that we do not allow any more charter schools in our city that are not district-approved. So that's something that we may need to take a vote, and I'm okay to take that vote. And the reason for that is, is because right now, what's happening is that the county, which is predominantly Republican, more conservative, I think it's a 4-1 in that county, what they do is our school district doesn't approve a charter because they don't feel that they're meeting the needs of students, and then they go to the county, and then the county approves it. And so that's a disservice to our governing bodies here. So there's a time where we have to push back as a community and say, well, if you're, if you found a loophole, we're going to close it over here. And so that's a true partner. So I want us to have that conversation with the rest of the council. I know that I can't dictate all by myself. It has to be a joint group. Anything that is approved through the district, and they are approving other charter schools- Anything that is approved through the district, and they are approving other charter schools, that are, there's some in, going through the system right now that they're looking to approve, because they're meeting the needs of students. Give you an example, our free and reduced lunch, okay? Free and reduced lunch. These district-approved charter schools are providing free and reduced lunch to students who are at need. The non-district-approved, not all of them, but some of them, don't do that, don't provide that service. So those are the kind of things that we have to look at. So anyways, those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Benavides?
I think the only other comment previously that I was neglected to mention is that the, as we look at the city and its future, at one point Santana, and actually probably when this general plan was approved, a number of decades ago, were more of a quieter, smaller-town, bedroom community. Times have changed, needs have changed. Going forward, we're getting to a place where we're embracing more our urban nature of the city, and with that, you know, comes density. With that comes, you know, intensification of development. Vertical development is a part of that. We spoke a bit ago, but in a different times, traffic is going to continue to be a concern, but frankly, it comes with being an urban environment. You go to Los Angeles, you go to New York, you go to Chicago, you go to Portland, you go to larger cities. Reality, one of the things that I've come around to realize is that it's just going to take us a bit longer to get from point A to point B. And that's just part of the nature of being in an urban environment. So I imagine that that's probably, you know, we try to mitigate it, but it's, I imagine that our general plan will lean more towards embracing the fact that we are an urban center and allowing, that will allow for some of that intensification and development and higher density. That's my last point.
Okay, I just have a couple of comments, and Councilman Vince Armento. One, just on the charter school discussion, that is, I'll give you a different example. You know, the Somali Academy, it's over on the West End, part of Garden Grove Unified School District. Garden Grove didn't feel comfortable, because they haven't really done that many charters, and so they kind of got stuck. So I encourage the, you know, the, really, it's the Orangewood Foundation to go to the county, a very thorough, difficult process, and they got approved. And today, because of that, if you go to the Somali Academy, it's an amazing school over on the West End, long waiting list, strong connection to UC Irvine. A lot of our Santa Ana kids are going to school there and graduating, going to tremendous universities because of the education that they're getting. So I just think this has to be a more robust discussion, and I think we just have so many successful schools in the city that are not, you know, approved by the local districts. And remember, we have five of them in Santa Ana, it's not just Santa Ana Unified. And I think some are very, very successful and an asset to the community. So just another question, do we have more items to cover? Is this pretty much it? Any comments from, I know Councilman Vince Armento had comments, but any comments on the left from Villas or Solario? All right, go ahead, Councilman Armento.
Well, I just wanted to thank you and your staff for working on this. I know it's been a while, and I know there's been funds allocated towards this for the past couple of years, so I'm glad that it's moving along. You know, as I think Councilmember Benavides summarized it well, I think all our expectations are being met, because we realize this is a very difficult tool to work with. And I think when people come into the, come into the community, the first thing they ask is, "What does your general plan allow for?" So when you're talking about an antiquated, older document, it makes it very difficult. You have to do a lot of spot zoning, you have to do a lot of curing of, you know, sort of band-aiding, you know, a solution for people. So hopefully, this will help. One of the things I know, because this community grew up as, you know, without a governing document, you have a lot of incompatible uses right up against one another. So to the extent that you all are softening those edges, creating those buffers between light industrial and industrial and residential, you know, those alleviate a lot of the concerns that, you know, what came before us tonight, you know, on the issue of impacts and intensification of uses. We all want to see those, but we want to see those in a measured way, right? So to the extent that this document will help us address that, I certainly want to thank you for that. But we will have a chance to see this document as it evolves.
Absolutely.
And so we appreciate the update, thank you.
Thank you.
Final comment before you leave. As we look at the OC Streetcar, and thank God it's coming, I think it's going to be a wonderful project that will impact the general plan and uses along the central city as we go east to west. This was a very, very big month for us, because a week ago, at OCTA, we had to take a $100 million vote, and that was an increase, basically going from $300 million to $400 million, largely because the administration held us up for a long time. And then with the tariffs on steel, guess what went up? We had a big increase in our bids on steel. And so now either you pay the higher, you know, price, or you don't do the project. And thank God the board saw it fit at OCTA to increase the budget. And now the project is basically, you know, really coming down the track, literally. And so, you know, the yard, I think that's going well. Mr. City Manager, I think you've been following that very closely. Do you want to speak to that briefly?
Yeah, just briefly, I think that the OCTA folks asked the city to take the lead. We got them to a certain point, and now really the ball is in their court. We just recently, about two weeks ago, sent them a letter, said, "Do you need anything else from us? We're waiting to hear from them." But we're hopeful that they're going to close the deal.
I think we are, and I, but I thank staff in the city, because we did our job there. But now, you know, the construction bids have been let out, we're about to award, and then construction is going to begin. So I just want to make sure that that's integrated, because as Councilman Benavides is talking about, you know, big cities and alternative ways of getting around and all that. Certainly, an environmentally friendly light rail running on electricity is going to be a big part of the future. So with that, thank you, and if there's no more comments, I'll go to public speakers.
Thank you.
Laura Perez, followed by Lizzie M. Lyles.
I'm not going to go off script this time, I promise. Good evening, everyone.
Let's pull it down a bit, go ahead.
I wanted to provide an update on the Fourth of July event from two weeks ago, on the history walk that was put on by the city of Santa Ana. As we had mentioned on the July 3rd council meeting, we had intentions to peacefully protest a committee member by the name of Lupe Morfin. Last year, Mrs. Morfin invited a man that is known, that is known to terrorize communities that are made up of immigrant families and making his living by live-streaming those acts via Facebook, YouTube, and a personal blog. During last year's walkthrough and the history, the history walk, Mrs. Morfin's friend took advantage of the attention that he received from community members and made money by live-streaming those community members along with children and parents of the city. During portions of the event, the support he received online was filled with hate and ignorance by outsiders. For an entire year, we questioned who was responsible for this man partaking in the event, and we never got an answer or a promise that this man wouldn't show up once again. So we took initiative and showed up to expose the sole responsible party for his presence. Our presence was effective to the point that George Washington, who was paid by the city of Santa Ana, came to her defense by intending to lunge at me. Had Santa Ana PD and several other event attendees not stood in between us, an assault would have taken place, and city officials that approved contractors, such as George Washington, would have been held liable. Two other incidents that occurred shortly after was a verbal attack by a committee member, and also Lupe's son, Jesse Moreno, along with the second assault attempt by him towards me, once again was about to happen. Had it not been for Santa Ana PD intervening, Mr. Moreno could have laid a hand on me. So my question for everyone here tonight is, what can we do as a community to remove the current committee members that have made this event part of their political agenda during an outside, during an outside-city events? Lupe Morfin's interest is not to promote a safe and educational activity. Rather, it is to bring danger to our children and the residents by calling the city, and excuse my French, and this is exactly what in her words, "a shithole full of illegal aliens."
Thank you. Dale, Lizzie Lyles and Dale. Lizzie, you're next.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And then Dale. And then Nawi.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmen. My name is Lizzie M. Lyles. I live on Pine Street in Santa Ana, and I'm from the Central City neighborhood. I am again before you to discuss banning fireworks. I know people say "safe and sound," and then we have the illegal. I want to ban them all. The Fourth of July this year, the fireworks began in my area approximately 4:00. But they had been going off for months prior. The loud noise, and they, and it continued until 1:00 or 2:00 that evening. The noise was unbearable, loud, blasting. The fireworks were so light that we didn't know if it was day or night where I live. You do not know, this is impossible for us to sleep. I live in a neighborhood where we all, and we're afraid of something happened to our homes. The fireworks that shoot up could hit our roofs and burn up our houses, and we don't want that to happen. In the house that I live in, I am definitely afraid of that, and because the fireworks were directed toward our homes. I know you already have information from the Santa Ana Police Department, from the fire departments, but do you have information from the local hospitals and departments that clean our streets after the Fourth of July? What a mess. I walk the streets, I see all of that mess. I still see it today. We need to seriously look at police calls and citations, number of possible house fires because of fireworks, injuries to our children, and extra manpower from the police department and fire department, the money that we're spending that we don't need to. How much extra money do we spend for those extra services when we could ban fireworks? My suggestion would be for all of us to get together to discuss the banning and find another way for fundraising. And we could do this, I think, by committees.
If you could please conclude soon. Go ahead.
I think we could have the Santa Ana, the city of Santa Ana staff, neighborhood associations, community members, the fireworks supporters, Santa Ana police, fire department, and the waste management, because they have to clean up all this mess, and we're still doing that today. I thank you for listening. I will be here again next year, and the next year, and the next year, talking about banning fireworks.
Thank you. Nawi, oh Dale, and then Nawi, go ahead Dale.
Dale Helvig, Park Santiago Neighborhood Association. The discussion on the work study, follow-up discussion on the work study was interesting, in fact, that the Envision Map was brought up again. And as you hopefully know, the developer of 2525 is basing his project on the Envision Map. So I don't want to get into that tonight, though, but it's another discussion. I did want to thank Mr. Solario last meeting for asking the city attorney for clarification on what you guys are allowed to say and do. And I'd also like to thank the city attorney's office for providing the advice and clarity by saying you should not take a formal position at this point in time, you could disqualify yourself on the vote. But I'd also like to thank her for saying that you can go ahead and seek, or essentially ask questions and look for concerns of the project. And that's one thing that I don't really see you guys doing. You're waiting for the EIR to come out. You ought to be looking at this project now. It's going to be very intense, and I don't know if you'll have enough time to go through it all. So ask your questions, voice your concerns now. Look at the EIR when it comes out. But as you go home tonight, why don't you swing by Ross Street and look at the five, six-story building going in for the county office space? That's what we're looking at going in across from Discovery Science Center. If you want a visual, excellent visual, that's how high it's going to be, so, thanks.
Thank you. Nawi? Give me your last name.
Whit Cilopochli, Nawi Whit Cilopochli.
Gracias, thank you.
Okay, so I want to talk about the Lupe Moreno, or aka Lupe Morfin situation. Lupe Moreno has been involved in many city events. She's part of the, or she used to be part of the Santana Library Friends. And this person has put down our community, the Mexican Indigenous Committee of Santana, since she's been involved in the city. She calls us illegals, she calls us wetbags, she calls this place, like what she said, "a shithole." And she brings her racist friends, like Arthur Sharper, that goes harassing street vendors, that calls people in our community backward people. And she's for deporting children, she's for ICE agents going into our schools and deporting children. How could this person be allowed to be in any committee in the city? How could the Santana support? Go ahead.
No, I just wanted our city attorney to figure out where it is, because I've got questions. Can somebody go see if, is our city attorney still around? Just hold on a second, please. I won't start the clock again for him, I don't want him penalized. But I just want her to hear this. No, just, I just want you to hear this. Just continue from where you were, please.
Okay, again, this is Nawi Whit Cilopochli, I'm an indigenous rights Mexican activist. And again, I want to talk about Lupe Moreno, aka Lupe Morfin. She lives in Santana, but she has a history of degrading our people, putting down our people, calling us illegals, wetbags. And she's for ICE deporting our children, she's for ICE going into schools deporting children. She's a part of the Santana, or Friends of the Library of Santana, or she's been part of it.
And I want to just stop you there for a moment. Is she a member of the library board or anything? I don't believe so. Yeah, but many years ago, she's been gone, so how can she be on a committee? She's not.
I said, I mean, I said, she used to be, I don't know if she is, but...
No, she is not.
But when she was, she was saying this kind of stuff. She was allowed to be in the city, and she's, she's against people speaking Spanish. I'm for, if you, the more languages you speak, the better.
I agree.
And I remember David Benavides, remember that Fourth of July parade or event that was supported by the city? And she brought her friends, she started calling the people that were going to this event, what she called as wetbags. Remember, you were, you even denounced her for saying that, I think it was you. And that was in like 2007? And now, here at the city, Lupe Moreno is bringing her racist friends, like Arthur Sharper, that goes around harassing street vendors, calls them illegal, calls them wetbags, and her racist family does the same. You can look at their Facebook accounts, look at Lupe Morfin. See what she thinks about the city of Santana, see what she thinks about our community. The city shouldn't support or fund any event that she's a part of, because all she does is bring white supremacists and racists to our communities.
Let me stop you saying, are we funding events for Lupe Moreno that anybody's aware of?
Yes, according to the White House.
No, I don't believe we're, I don't believe we're funding anything. I think that, my understanding is that there's this community group that has a walk of history.
Yeah, but we don't fund anything.
No, we don't. And...
Why don't we do a separate meeting with the city manager? Let's get some of these specifics, so we can try to help you out.
Like I said, I said, fund it or support it, because the city's involved. Like I said, I said, fund it or support it, because the city's involved.
Well, and we don't want to, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And then after Perla, we have Gary Thomas, and then Patty Mays.
Okay, good evening, everybody. And like, the corruption in the city, thanks to you, this shirt never gets old. So I am here again because we were, last year, there were only five of us protesting Lupe Moreno and her racist friends. This year, we had a bigger crowd than the whole stage that you guys had for five hours out of the day. Next year, we're going to have thousands of people at the city. So I am here to ask anybody who is in charge of making or approving these, people that are so filled of hate towards our community and our students. I was the immigrant child that crossed the border, holding her abuelita's hand when I was 10 years old, coming to Santana. So this, this hits home. We were here on the 5th of July of last year, asking for questions. We spent hours on the phone. We asked several people individually and up here to help us keep these people out of our neighborhoods. We were here until almost 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock last week, trying to get you to stop these people from coming. And they were here. And like Laura said, if it hadn't been for the Santa Ana Police Department, she would have been assaulted, not just by one, but by three people. So this is a liability on your hands, because we were also aware that there were skinheads walking around. But because there were a lot more of us, they didn't dare to approach us. But now there's articles and op-eds and pictures of us flying around, these Make America Great And I'm not afraid. If I was afraid, I wouldn't be wearing this shirt. If I was afraid, I wouldn't be up here. So I want to tell Lupe Moreno to bring it.
Thank you.
My name's Gary Thomas. My family's been in Santa Ana 100 years. My grandmother's sister was a second woman doctor here in 1919.
What was her name?
Hester O'Weiler.
Thank you.
We've been in this state before it was a state, 1848. We've given back to the community. My father was heavily involved in the COP program, I was involved in the COP program. There's things in the police department that kind of concern me. We have a mounted unit, which is a great luxury, but if we could trim that out of the budget and use it for other services and other areas of need, I would like to see that. That's a great concern. And then also, my family has paid the ultimate price in law enforcement. My grandmother's brother was the first peace officer killed in San Diego County in 1915 on a posse. There's several things that concern me about the city, proper representation. I hear that we have city money being spent for people that are being detained by ICE, but yet sometimes I feel us as residents aren't being properly represented. I met Mr. Solano at the meeting at 2525 Main, and I spoke with him, and I asked him if you'd go around and speak with the neighbors, and he just looked at me. And I said, "Isn't that your job?" And the next thing I know is, "I'm not making fun of your hat or your shirt." I have a hat that depict law enforcement. I had a red shirt on because my support for the Fire Department Chief Bowman, Wayne, was one of my dad's scouts. And I had to have a friend of mine that's pro-Trump, from Mexico, explain to me, "Wearing a red shirt means I'm a Trump supporter." But, you know, being a whetto, I don't understand that. Whetto is a derogatory term for the white guy.
It's not, huh?
It seems like that's what I've been presented at.
This means you're light-skinned.
Light-skinned, huh?
I worked at the Indian Reservation at Paula for four and a half months. I know what it means to be an outsider. All the Indians told me I was an outsider. You know, I have compassion, and we should reach out to those in need of your nationality, of any nationality.
Thank you. Thank you. Patty, why don't you come on down, please?
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Patty Mays. I've come to you before, I have written you letters. Once again, I just want to highlight, you know, that we're against 2525 Main Street. But I get the feeling, we get the feeling that the developer feels that this is a slam dunk. Why is that? Why do they feel that this project that is not zoned, it's not zoned for what they want? But they made an original proposal of 517-unit apartment complex that literally backs up to our unique neighborhood. They did resubmit, revise the plan to 496 units, still at five stories, still unacceptable. The proposed development, in combination with all the other developments going on within a half a mile of this location, like there's 1,852 new apartment units going in within a half mile. It's incompatible with adjoining our neighborhood. It's inappropriate use of land, for obvious reasons. This impacts our neighborhood, the surrounding areas would be devastating, increased traffic in a currently clogged up area, increased pollution, overcrowding, lack of neighborhood parking, to name a few. I don't know if you've ever been at that intersection, it's a horrible intersection. There's been more accidents there. I hope there's somebody doing a study on that, on that. Getting on, people getting on the five freeway, the carpool lane, going to the, trying to get on the five north and south, it's just, it's just a horrible intersection. We had, in January, we did a, we surveyed the neighborhood, 96% of the neighborhood opposed this project. We had the Sunshine Meeting. Every, you know, over 500 neighbors oppose it. In November, we had 150 residents at the scoping meeting. In March, 170-plus letters for the EIR, EIR input. This project is not for this site. The developer sent out this beautiful brochure, it showed, and it's very misleading. I hope that you looked at that brochure and realized all the things that were misleading. It showed Main Street with four cars. I've lived in Santa Ana in Park Santiago for 30 years. I've never seen four cars on Main Street. It claims that they're working with the neighborhoods to develop a site that fits the neighborhood.
Patty, if you could conclude soon. The light is red.
Okay, and there's, I've sent this all to you in an email. There's 500 voices against, no apartments, no rezoning, it doesn't even show the veranda. So how many stories will it be? Six, seven? We hope you'll take into consideration our valid concerns of this project and not award this developer the right to rezone. Please do not rezone this area.
Thank you. With that, I'm going to go back in a closed session. We have some things to do, and then we'll come out for council comment and to wrap up the meeting.